Welcome to the City Council meeting for November twenty, excuse me, for, oh goodness, for December thirteenth, thank you very much, for December thirteenth, two thousand and ten. I'd like to welcome everybody and I'd like to call the meeting to order. I'd invite you all to stand and join me in singing Canada's National Anthem. I'd like to thank the National Film Board of Canada for the images of our country and Mr. David Bray for the audio. Could I have a motion to receive the adoption of the previous meeting minutes? Those would be the minutes of November twenty-ninth. Councillor Crokin?
I thank you Mayor Given. I move the minutes of the City Council meeting held November twenty-ninth, two thousand and ten be adopted.
Thank you very much. We'll call for the vote. Thank you. And that motion does carry. We have a motion for the adoption of the agenda. Councillor Augustin?
Thank you Mayor Given. I'll move that council adopt the agenda as presented.
Thank you very much. Any additions or deletions? Seeing none, we'll call for the vote. Thank you. That motion also carries. So, next is the delegation portion of our agenda. This is an opportunity for anyone to come forward and address council about any item on our agenda or any public matter that is not the subject of a public hearing. We did have one group that was let us know that they were going to be here today and we have a delegation from the City of Grand Prairie Youth Council and so I see Mr. Dale Tiedemann, Ms. Megan Kelly, and Ms. Sidney Prusenka. If you'd like to come up and join us at the table in the center here. Welcome ladies. Please just introduce yourselves again for the city clerk and take it away.
I'm Megan Kelly.
It's a pretty strong mic. You should be able to just leave it and if you speak at a decent volume, we'll pick you up. Welcome.
Good evening Mayor Given and members of council. Thank you for having us. My name is Sidney Prusenka and this is Megan Kelly. We are members of the new City of Grand Prairie Youth Council and are excited to be here. As many of you probably already know, some of our members have been busy working on a community calendar aimed at raising awareness about diversity in cities. After six months of hard work, we are proud to announce that the Beyond Faces 2011 Youth Diversity Calendar is now finished and ready for distribution. The idea for Beyond Faces came from a small group of youth council members who attended Bylaw's, the province of Alberta's annual volunteer sector conference this past June. We attended sessions designed specifically for teenagers and were tasked by leaders to look at our personal strengths as individuals and partner them together as a team. Using these strengths, we were encouraged to tackle a community issue and make positive change. With Grand Prairie being a growing community, we had started to notice more bullying and intolerance towards others going on. Collectively as a group, we decided that calendar would be a great way to showcase the uniqueness and individuality of teenagers living in our community while reminding one other that we are all very much the same. We selected Susan Sagmeister as our photographer and held three days of photo shoots in the local, the three local high schools in all late August. Beyond Faces features the photos of seventeen local teenagers and young adults from very unique backgrounds. Each person involved in the calendars has shared an inspiring story of how bullying or discrimination has impacted them. Community support for this project has been absolutely amazing. As mentioned, the calendars are now available to the general public and will be sold for twenty dollars each or for ten dollars for youth. If it's okay with you, we would like to present each member of city council with a complimentary copy of the project. Thank you for your support and happy holidays.
Well, thanks very much. Before you present those, I just wonder are there any questions from council members for the delegation? I see Councillor Rice has a question.
Okay. Megan, at the end you kind of said the calendars are twenty dollars each or ten dollars?
For you.
Oh, for us.
No, for, excuse me, for youth.
Youth, okay. Youth, got it.
Any, any further questions for the delegation? Councillor Adburn?
Thank you Mayor Given. Gals, thanks for coming. Can you tell me there's something, is a launch or something happening tomorrow night? Who's that for and where is it at? Maybe tell us a little bit about it.
It's at Tito's. I think it starts at seven. So we'll have, I think, some big blowups of some of the pictures in the calendar and most of the youth are coming, I believe. So we've invited, I think, all of you guys.
Yep.
Some key sponsor members and all that kind of stuff, but it should be pretty good.
Thank you. Okay, thanks very much. Were there any other questions or no? Okay, thanks very much ladies. So please hand out your calendars and I know that our marketing communications coordinator is looking to get a photo, so I'd be happy to pose for a photo and then accept the first, the first calendar if you guys would be up for that.
Yeah.
Well ladies, as you're handing that out, I just want to say it's a pleasure to see the first delegation from the youth council coming forward and hopefully we'll see you on a more regular basis at committee meetings or at council meetings. Thanks again for your presentation ladies. Much appreciated. Okay, so this is still the delegation portion of our agenda and we're welcome anybody that wanted to speak to council on any issue that's going to be addressed on our agenda, other than the ones that are a matter of a public hearing. So if there's anybody else that would like to speak to city council on any other issue, now would be the time to come forward. I'd call one final time to see if there's anybody that wanted to come forward to speak to a council issue. And I think there's somebody that doesn't want to come forward. Gentlemen, if you'd like to, please come forward to the microphone and when you come, I'd just ask you to introduce yourself for the city clerk and you can make your presentation. We would ask you to keep it to approximately five minutes as we do have a full agenda tonight. Welcome.
Good evening Mayor, council. We're here, my name's Abdul Bari. I'm from this Abraham potion. We're from Golden, Checker and GP Caps in Grand Prairie. We're basically presenting the taxi industry as a whole, even though we're not here on official status, but we're basically presenting to the council and the city issues that are affecting the industry as a whole. There is an issue on the agenda today that regards the changes to the bylaw subsection that affects the, the industry. But we wanted to give the city a few insights into what's going on and what we hope to achieve in the future. We have, we attended the Protective Services Committee and presented similar idea or talked a little bit about it. Basically, what we're hoping to achieve is to see some changes to the, to the, the way the industry is set up. Right now we're running an open system whereas, which basically allows for any number of cab companies, any number of vehicles to operate in the city. We're hoping to see that change, to have a closed system where it's, there's an ease for control for the administration and for the companies and as well more income and better working conditions for the drivers. To give you a few examples is the number of taxi cabs in, in the city. Operating maybe there's twelve, but there is maybe about seventeen registered in the city. The number of vehicles about, say somewhere between a hundred fifteen to a hundred, goes to the two hundred. That basically, one of the issues that's in the agenda today is the number of hours that drivers put in, which exceeds the normal operating hours for industry like ours. And the cost of that is basically the driver's trying to make a living and they, that's the only way they see they can do because there's not enough business and there's too many competitions. Cities like Fort MacMurray, there's maybe three companies. Red Deer, there's two. Even bigger cities like Calgary and Edmonton, there is a maximum of seven companies and the number of vehicles comparable to our city is much less per capita. Few other things is the meters that we use, basically it's, even though the industry is, is, has the control, but we are hoping to see something where the least agreed upon rate is standard and it's actually regulated and checked so that people are not confused about taking one cab and it costs so much and then you hop in the next one and it's a different rate. So basically that's a better service for the public and maybe Abraham can add a few things.
Thank you, thank you. Thanks Mr. Mayor and City Council, thank you. We were sure, we were told last meeting that we can come in on Monday whether we were supposed to come in as a delegation or just show up. That's why we were a little bit hesitant to come forward or not and I guess it wasn't a proper way to do maybe this way, but thanks for having us. I guess most of you, city councillors and the mayor, we emailed some quick kind of background in the industry. I have been in the industry more than twenty years and we've been operating in Grand Prairie since two thousand and four and since then I guess most of you, if you lived in Grand Prairie, most of you I think have been long enough to remember what kind of tax services that we have, what kind of vehicles we used to use. And the previous two mayors and Protective Services did excellent job and that was improving the safety issue. Cars were mess, we weren't doing a proper kind of mechanical inspection and we brought in a newer vehicle, every cab company now is catching up and we see the similar cars that we see in bigger cities and, but there are some issue I never asked before, what we're looking is, there are so many taxi cab companies in, in Grand Prairie and what we're asking for the city council and the mayor is to look into the industry and seventeen or sixteen taxi cab companies, it's way too many if we can, see if we can try one more thing and limit the taxi cab companies and it is something that we can solve a lot of problems going this way, but the main concern is these draft documents and that's where we say we have to regulate hours of the drivers, that they work, that is not the solution and that's not the best way to go. And if we say, okay, I have to deliver every second or third day of the month, I have to fax all these documents to them, it's only twelve days, it's about seventy-seven pages. That's the logbook that we have. If I fax these documents, it's almost two hundred and thirty pages and it's only one company. It's not all the other companies, it's only gold cabs. That will be a lot of paperwork for us and it's gonna be, I don't know how the enforcement department will keep these documents in file, there's some sort of information, all of that and this is the logbook where we recorded which driver, where he picked up the fares, what time he picked up, what time he drove off the customer and that's way too much to enforce of good hours and it's something that we may do it better than this way, but it's not the best solution to go, to go forward. And other issue is, that's main concern is the meter rates. Every cab company uses different. This is the seal that we use right now in our meters and that's, has a little hole you use that kind of wire and it's a let, it's poison, I better go home soon and wash my hands. That's a let, that's what we use right now in the taxi meters and we just punch it and it's sealed. Sometimes, some people they use a pin and they push it down and they cut the wire, change the program on the meter and then put it back and you can't tell whether it's been tempered or not, but what we have right now in our cars, most of them, this is plastic. It's similar way, it's, you use the same thing, but it's a plastic. It has numbers. Those numbers are not gonna repeat. Every taxi cab company in Grand Prairie will have a different serial number and the bylaw officer will record that number in their file. They want to come to that car, they just read the number and they say, no, this is not the seal we put on this vehicle. And you press that button, it seals. You can't temper it. If you try to do something, it will break and you can't put it back and this is the seal. It costs only dollar, I think, or less than even a piece and they made in Canada, we can get it in Toronto somewhere. And this is the seal that we're recommending to use it. It has numbers, all the other bigger cities they use, it's not poison, sometimes you may have in your car for your kids and they may play around with this seal, but we're asking the city to think about, to make sure most cab companies, they agree the rate. Let's say, we say, okay, we'll agree two dollars or a dollar fifty a kilometer. We should make the decision and say that's the rate and that's the program everybody should use. If the fuel goes up or something, we can come back to the city council or the enforcement department, we can debate about which rate is reasonable. It's something that the public will notice in thirty days, the rate will go up and I guess when it goes up, it never goes down. That's the other problem, you know, like when you increase, but what we're asking for is to limit the taxi cab companies in town and thank you very much. We took more than twenty minutes, I think, each of us.
Well, not, not quite gentlemen, but do appreciate you trying to be brief. Were there any questions for the delegation? I see Councillor Rice?
Maybe not for the delegation. Did, did I not see that Protective Services has asked administration to do a report to research this, these very items?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Any further questions? I see Councillor McLean?
Thank you Mayor Given. One thing that struck me quite a bit in Protective Service Committee and we're gonna bring that forward is the rates. So grandma, grandpa, or somebody in the community can get a ride and only have so much change and they may be charged an extra five bucks and they may not have no more change to get back to where they gotta go. So that's very, that's news that, and it's been in the community for a while, different rates and I was charged more to go from here to here and I never knew that the rates were completely open for different cab companies, so thank you for bringing that up to my attention.
Councillor Adburn?
Thank you Mayor Given. Gentlemen, thank you very much for both coming to Protective Services and today and thank you for your written, I guess, information. I thought it was kind of well thought out and we will certainly share this with administration and make sure that these ideas, solutions are part of our consideration as we move forward. Councillor Rice is quite correct. We've asked administr, we've asked, the committees asked him in to report on comparable data and recommendations relative to number of taxis, number of taxi companies, licensing requirements for chauffeurs, vehicles and companies, and rate setting processes, so, and that was directly, well, you had great influence in that motion, so hopefully we can work together as we move forward. Once we get a report from, from administration, we can see what we can do.
Thank you. Thanks very much. Seeing no further questions, thank you very much gentlemen. Appreciate you being here tonight to speak to the issue and you'll see this dealt with fairly soon on the agenda. Thank you. Okay, so were there, is there anybody else who wanted to address council on any item that wasn't on a public hearing? I'll call one last time. And I don't see anybody else coming forward, so we'd move on to the public hearing portion of our agenda and I would call to order the public hearing for bylaw C-1060-11 to amend the Southeast Area Structure Plan and I would throw that over to administration and our public works team.
Thanks Mayor Given. Prior to getting into the subject of the report, I thought I'd do a very, very brief discussion about the, the documents that we're gonna be discussing tonight for the benefit of the new members of council as well as a bit of refresher for the returning councillors. This, this bylaw is an application to amend an area structure plan. In this case, it's bylaw C-1060 and it's the Southeast Area Structure Plan. This is a, this is a graphic I pulled from the recently adopted municipal development plan and it just shows the, the legislative framework of the planning documents and at the very top is the municipal development plan and that discusses very broad policies and has a very generalized future land use map. The area structure plan gets a little bit more detailed in that it details future land use and major roadways, but it leaves a lot of the further details to the outline plan. And then of course, after the outline plan, you get into rezonings, land use bylaws, subdivisions, development permits and so forth. So the level of plan that we're gonna be discussing tonight is the area structure plan. An area structure plan is adopted by council as a bylaw. It is a statutory plan legislated by the province as to the process of how it's adopted as well as the contents of the plan. It establishes the general planning framework for an area of undeveloped land and it is more detailed than the MDP but less detailed than the outline plan, so as this graphic conveys. So on to the matter of the, the public hearing. An application has been submitted on, by Focus Corporation on behalf of the subject owner, or the owners of the subject lands. The property is located on the west side of Ninety Second Street, east of the rail, rail line yards and west of countryside north. It is approximately seven point five hectares in size. As I discussed, it's located in the Southeast Area Structure Plan, which was adopted by city council in two thousand and one. The Southeast Area Structure Plan has the subject lands designated for future industrial business uses. As you can see on this, this graphic, this is the development concept pulled directly from the Southeast Area Structure Plan. The dark blue is general industrial, the light blue, which contains the subject property, is the industrial business. The rail line and switching yard is highlighted with the yellow dashed line and then on the other side of the rail lines is arterial commercial which butts Resources Road. Industrial business is a, it's the lowest intensity industrial land use district that the city has in the land use bylaw. A good example of an industrial business district is in the West Side Plaza area, which is the World Gym area, gives you an idea, has a number of low intensity industrial and even a mix of commercial uses in it. Advertisements, oh sorry, I'll just go to this one. The applicant is proposing to redesignate a portion of the industrial business land to higher family residential, or higher density residential and what you would likely see in that would be any form of multi-unit housing up to and including four-story apartments. Advertisements of the bylaw were completed as per the requirements of the act, which included letters to adjacent property owners and advertisements in the newspaper. The, we received one letter in response to the public notification. The letter is from CN, owner and operator of the adjacent rail yard and rail lines. The letter outlines their opposition to the amending bylaw, highlighting the fact that railways are a heavy industrial mode of transportation that create noise, vibration, emissions, et cetera. That letter is, is attached to your report as attachment five. As part of the application review process, the proposal is circulated to various internal and external agencies for comment. The City of Grand Prairie Fire Department submitted a response outlining concern for the proposed amendment. The City of Grand Prairie's Stage One Risk Assessment, which was completed in two thousand and eight, identifies the rail, rail line and switching yard as a systemic risk. Their concerns focus primarily on the materials that are transported along the rail line, which include hazardous materials such as anhydrous ammonia, sulfuric acid, propane, butane, sodium chloride, gasoline, methanol and diesel. The fire department acknowledges that a switching yard is an extremely hazardous area as the activity that occurs there increases the risks of spills, leaks and derailments. The letter from the City of Grand Prairie Fire Department is attached to the report as attachment number four. Planning does not support the proposed amendment for the following reasons. The Southeast Area Structure Plan development concept envisions commercial and industrial uses surrounding the entire rail line and switching yard area. This concept was intentional, respecting the nature of the activity and the compatibility issues that the rail line and switching yard present. We believe that this development concept is the most appropriate and that should, and it should not be compromised by allowing residential development in this area. Compatibility of land uses is one of the fundamental principles behind land use planning and the rail line and switching yards present a number of elements that are not compatible with residential uses. As discussed by the fire, the letter from the fire department, the presence of hazardous materials compounded with increased risks of switching yards creates a major issue both in terms of public safety as well as emergency response. There is an increased risk of spills and derailments in that yard. Notwithstanding the safety concerns, these yards create a number of elements that are not compatible with residential developments from a quality of life perspective. A lot of noise and vibration is generated as trains pass by and are assembled, an activity that occurs at all times of the day and night. While it is tempting to reason that the market will determine whether the site is appropriate for residential development, one needs to remember that during boom times, which we recently saw over the last number of years, when vacancies are low, people in need of housing have little to no choice. Planning staff do not anticipate any land use compatibility issues with the development of an industrial business district on these lands and having residential development in the countryside north neighborhood. in the Countryside North neighborhood. 92nd Street provides an adequate buffer between the two properties. 92nd Street will eventually become a four-lane divided arterial roadway, much like 84th, parts of 68th, and, and the like. And it is common to use arterial roadways as a divide between residential and non-residential uses. Furthermore, one of the recent growth strategies that the city has been focusing on has been to preserve and increase the city's industrial land supply. Industrial assessment and the resulting property taxes play an integral role in the municipality's fiscal sustainability. Policy 4.6, which is highlighted in your report of the municipal development plan, addresses this notion. And in closing, allowing resident, residential development in this predominantly industrial area could limit the development, developability of adjacent industrial parcels. Land designated for future industrial, future industrial development should be preserved to allow for the highest and best use of that land, not limited by adjacent residential development. For all of these reasons, planning staff does not support the proposed amendment and therefore recommends that council defeat second reading of bylaw C-1060-11.
Okay. Thank you very much, Mr. Johnson. At this time, I'd ask if there's any brief questions for administration. We will have another opportunity to ask questions of administration, so just brief questions for clarification before we call up anybody else. Okay? Seeing none, then I'd call for anybody who'd like to make a presentation in favor of the application. If there's anybody that would like to make a presentation in favor of the application, I'd ask them to join us at the presenter's table and identify themselves. I think all of you guys probably know the process. Have a seat and welcome.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and counsel. I'm Scott Rossler with Focus Corporation. This is Harvey Stewart and Scott Brabich with Prudential Lands. I was just going to ask if Joe, could you throw that, that plan?
Yeah. Very short plan. The existing development concept or is this the proposed?
Yeah. All right. So, the application before you today is an amendment for the Southeast Area Structure Plan. As you saw in the document, or the description of the different documents that Joe put before you there, there would be subsequent applications to amend the outline plan and land use bylaw following an approval today. That's, that's conditional on the approval. If, if not, none of those would happen. The follow-up applications will include provisions for servicing, so we would deal at that time with sanitary sewer, storm sewer, water mains, transportation issues, and parks. And at that time, discussions with Aquaterra and city staff would be undertaken to ensure serviceability of the proposed zoning. There's been several discussions on land use for this parcel. They started in 2005 and continued with several proposals to the city planning department. The application before you today is a result of these discussions. So, throughout this process, city planning has indicated consistently that they would support a transitional zoning in the proposed area adjacent to IH-zoned CN parcel, and that transitional zoning was, was best sought after as either industrial or commercial. Through the consideration of, through the, the process, we also considered using an MX zoning, which is a mixed-use zoning to incorporate commercial and residential developments above it. This concept was sidelined by a few issues development related to parking and market demands. Our client, and being Prudential Lands, envisions a two-story townhome development, which would incorporate a lower-density development than, than what would be allowable in a, in a higher-density multifamily-type development. The proposed zoning would, and concept would yield a much lower residential population than is currently permitted under the commercial zones adjacent west of the tracks. In all five commercial zones, mixed-use apartments are permitted land use under the land use bylaw. So, with all the, the area that's red, which would be a commercial zoning, mixed-use apartments being a permitted use, and I'll read the definition of the land use bylaw itself, contain residential apartments sharing a building with a commercial, retail, or institutional use. Commercial, retail, or institutional use should be located primarily on the ground floor facing the street. However, it may occupy other sections of the building. The apartments may occupy any other part of the building. Apartments may have shared or separate entrance facilities, however, access to the apartment should not be through the commercial space, so, meaning basically, business is on the first floor, possibly the second, rest being residential. And mixed-use apartments are permitted under land use bylaw for all five of the commercial zonings. CA zoning currently active for the majority of the three-kilometer stretch, which is that long red block on the other side of the tracks, permits, permits, if it's zoned as CA, permits six-story mixed-use building, five of which may be residential. The proposed zoning of the countryside crossing, which is the proposed development today, would yield a lower-density residential population than the existing zoning on the opposite side of the tracks. And just to address, we have been in contact quite regularly from the beginning of the process with CN. They were circulated in the application, and we were provided development guidelines for development adjacent to a railway. My clients are currently in possession of these guidelines and are aware of the implications, and they include vibration analysis, noise attenuation, and considerations for all impacts that a railway would have to a development. The development concept, should this be approved today, would be circulated to CN, and their guidelines will be followed when feasible for the development. I'll turn it over to Harvey. He's going to give you just a, a background on, on the process that has, has been brought us here today.
Actually, if I may correct, that Scott is going to do that. So, I'll pass it to Scott. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, counsel. Just to give a little bit of a background on this, on this whole process, I kind of got involved where we had many meetings with, with city planning department, and very good meetings. I mean, we, we worked at trying to figure out some sort of a compromise to this issue, so we, it was a good process, and, and we appreciate that. But ultimately, they, they decided that, you know, this is what they, they believed in and what thought fit best for that area. And so, we took it upon ourselves to get the public involved. So, we, and Joe sent out a, or the planning department sent out a letter as well, looking for people to either oppose or, or get some feedback to the planning department and, about this, and they didn't receive really anything from the public. And we actually did the same thing. I mean, it was, it was difficult to get the, the people out and give us their opinion. So, we, we, we did quite a bit of knocking on doors. We had, March 2nd, 2010, we, we sent out a letter to the residents, basically stating what is the issue that's going on here and what we believe fit best for that area. The letter was, it was difficult because we wanted to show pictures as well. And so, we showed, you know, we wanted to have a commercial development on the southern portion of that land, and then on the north portion, some, like what Scott was saying, some townhomes or two-story type row housing. And so, we did show, basically, here's what we want, and here's what the, the administration wants. And so, what we did is we went up 92nd Street, just north a little bit, and there's some, right about 84th and 92nd, there's quite a bit of the IB zoning. And so, we took pictures of those. So, yeah, IB zoning can be World Gym, or it can be that stuff that's up on 92nd, which is a little bit, looks a little more heavy industrial. I know it's industrial business, but that's, that's what we went to the, the public with. And so, I'll tell you, I, I went to, we had the letter out, we had an open house in the Countryside neighborhood, March 16th. About a dozen residents showed up there, and, and that probably wasn't enough, so we kept on at them, and we sent another letter out. We made it so easy where they could just sign something and send it back to us or actually email us. So, in the end, we have about little over 100 residents that supported what we had presented to them. There was some people who we talked to who didn't sign, and, more than once. And it's funny, because I, I was in their house and talking to them, and, and they said, "Well, you know, we kind of support what you guys do, but we don't want any development behind us in that area." So, you know, and our stance was if we, if we don't, you know, if we can't get what we're, we're kind of shooting for, for that neighborhood, then we're not sure what we're going to do with that land. And so, that's what we relayed to the, to the residents. We did send out a third letter on October 20th, and between November and, and just as recently as last week, I've been still knocking on doors and talking to people about it. So, that's kind of the background for the, the public input. Just, I guess, to wrap up what Prudential Lands, and Harvey will get into that as well, is we just, we really have a, a vision for that area. And I mean, we were the developer for Countryside South and Countryside North, and we take great pride in that area. We think it's a very good area for, for people, and we just feel that, we feel very strongly that the IB zoning does not fit within that neighborhood. So, I'll hand it over to Harvey. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Scott. One of the things that really strike us about the, the planning department's position on this is that it, it seems very confusing and contradictory in a lot of ways to us. If we could have that map back up there, please. I, I wanted to direct your attention to that map. Now, Scott talked a little bit about this, but I'd, I'd like to reiterate it again. If you look at that red portion, the bottom red portion on the right-hand side is basically the bottom portion of 30 acres that Prudential Lands has there. That bottom 10 acres is already zoned for commercial. That will allow mixed-use buildings under the zoning. It will allow for apartment on the first three floors of a four-story building, commercial on the bottom. This land is immediately next to the land that we're asking for the zoning proposal on, and it's immediately adjacent to the rail yards. If you cross the tracks to the west and go all the way from 68th Avenue up to, I believe it goes all the way up to 92nd Avenue, 96th Avenue as a matter of fact, sorry, but that area of commercial there is zoned so that you can actually do apartment buildings of mixed use with commercial on the bottom floor and residential on the top five floors. That's allowable all along that strip. It is immediately adjacent to the railway. It is immediately adjacent to where you run into the shunting yards farther north from 68th Avenue. And I guess our, our concern is, why would this type of residential be different than multifamily residential? Why is residential allowed on the west side of the tracks that it is called commercial, and yet it's not allowed on the east side of the tracks if it's called residential? And how can we, how can one consider a more acceptable residence for cities, citizens than another? How, how can we have those two classifications? To us, it's very confusing. We also find contradiction in what CN says, and the picture the planning department paints about some of the potential hazards that are involved here. We have a letter, maybe Scott, I'll ask you to pass this out. Actually, it's not a letter, it's an email, that we got from Carl Terschman, the Dangerous Goods Officer for CN dated April 8th, 2009, where he talks about the top 10 commodities, commodities that travel by rail into the city of Grand Prairie. And I quote from his email. "I can say that the top 10 products total over 1,500 cars in 2008, and none of the top 10 have a large migration potential, meaning that in the unlikely event of an incident, the products would most likely remain close to the scene." End of quote. You have that copy of the letter there in front of you. Even in the copy of the letter that you have in your package from Anita Fleming from CN, it's attachment five, I believe, she states, "If the city is to consider this type of development, CN requests that the recommended mitigation measures be incorporated into the development approvals as per our previous email regarding adjacent development near railway yards." We would be following their request with any development that we do. We would be, we would provide the setbacks they require, the birmingham, the fencing, whatever they require to meet what they call for in their guidelines. We have another item here, which is a cross-section labeled as Country Station, which was done by Focus. I'd just like you to have a copy of that, because it shows the dimensions that the property we have, it shows those dimensions from the railway track. And you'll see there that it shows a distance of 75 meters from the track edge to the west edge of the closest proposed residential building. And for those of you who are close to my age, and I think there's a couple of them on this council, I'm going to talk feet here, not meters, so forgive me.
Mr. Stewart, sorry, I don't know if you guys have an extra copy of that.
Yeah. Sorry, are we short one?
You can put it down on the table, and we can show it on the overhead camera, so the public can see it as well.
Yep.
And so, if all the technology works right, and they'll zoom in, and if you can adjust it so that they can zoom in and get a little bit closer so people can see it.
Yeah, we want that bottom portion there. It's where the dimensions are.
Okay. Probably looks a little blurry right now, but, oh, never mind. As I speak, it, it fixes. Okay. Thanks very much, Mr. Stewart. Please continue.
Okay. We can come back to that with questions if someone wants to later. There's a few other dimensions we'd like you to be aware of, which we feel have a bearing on the zoning change we are asking for. And I'd point out, too, that the dimensions I'm going to give you now have all been pulled off the GIS site on the internet, so they're dimensions that are common knowledge. Immediately adjacent to the area where we are proposing the change, the rail yard has three tracks. Going north from the northernmost boundary of our property, it is a distance of 1,500 feet before the tracks start to widen out, and at a distance of 2,000 feet, the rail yard becomes nine tracks wide. So, at that point, 2,000 feet north of the north boundary of our property, you're actually at the point where the real shunting yards start, the nine tracks wide. This is the area where we argue that the vast amount of the storage, the switching, whatever you want to call it, takes place there. This is also the area where the majority of train noise and vibration takes place, where on a warm night, pretty much anywhere in our city, you can hear the sound of the train. This is also the area where if anything is to go wrong, it is very likely to take place 2,000 feet to the north of the north boundary of the property we're asking for the zoning change on. Center Court, a new condominium development built just a couple of years ago, just south of 100th Avenue and east of the rail tracks. At its closest point sits just 55 feet from nearest track. A thousand feet south of the southernmost of those two buildings, the track starts to widen, and 1,500 feet to the south of that building, you run into the nine-track-wide shunting yards again. I bring those up as comparisons to where our land sits. Also, another one I would mention is Sunrise Towers, the high-rise apartment building on the corner of Resources Road and 94th Avenue. That building sits just 655 feet to the west of the closest track in the nine-track-wide shunting yard. If you accept the fire department's statement that any building within a quarter of a mile of a possible toxic spill may have to be evacuated, it includes a great many sites other than our site. And a lot of those sites are already existing with residential are closer than our site. Make one last thing here. In my mind, in fact, if you accept the fire department's quarter-mile rule and the fact that any possible spillage is more likely to take place within the nine-track-wide shunting area, then our property at 2,000 feet to the south is out of that quarter-mile range. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, gentlemen. Was there anything further that you had, or that was your presentation? Okay. If there's nothing, then we'd ask, have an opportunity for council members to ask questions. I see Counsel Augustine.
Thank you, Mayor Gillen, Mayor Gillen. Did, did you say you've been?
your presentation? Okay. If there's nothing, then we'd have an opportunity for council members to ask questions. I see Councilor Augustin.
Thank you, Mayor Gillen, Mayor Given. Did, did you say you've been working on this since two thousand and five?
Yeah, that's true.
Yes.
The first application, we've been working back and forth on planning, and it hasn't been steady. I mean, it had a two-year lull in there where nothing happened with the element being so slow. But yes, the first application form I pulled out, I filed this morning, and it was October eleventh, two thousand and five.
I see. When does your client predict he's going to start development if this was to pass tonight?
Possibly as early as, as spring, but, I mean, development driven by the market swing. Henry seems to be fairly, fairly intent on, on this zoning and doing some sort of a townhome walk-up type of development. So, I wouldn't be surprised if it was next year, but it could be five.
Is there any other cities that have similar developments next to the rail yards that you know of? Similar to this one?
None that we know of. We didn't research that.
Also, maybe, I don't know if Bill can help us, has there been any incidents, CN's yard, that anybody can recall? I, I know there's more, I, I remember more incidents on, out of the yard than, than in the yard.
Counselor Augustin, I'll just ask if we can leave the questions for administration after. This is the opportunity to ask the delegation any questions that you'd have, and we will get an opportunity to ask administration for the questions after. We, but if the delegation, if the delegation would like to speak to Counselor Augustin's question, that's fine.
We, we did do some research on that, and we did find, I think there was, there was one in two thousand and seven, two thousand and eight, right back here by the, the crossing of a Hundredth. So, there was, there was a derailment right there by the Mac store. And that same spot, apparently, it's happened three times. So, that's out of the, obviously, it's way out of that, that rail yard.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you very much. I see a few others in line. So, we have Counselor McLean.
Thank you, Mayor Given. Scott, you said you went to a lot of the homes. I door-knocked that whole area. I live in Summerside. That's my area. I like, I've been there a long time, since it started, nearly. And what I, what I liked about it is, I'm very interested in the bottom, south part here. You're talking, besides, I'm going off point, I'm asking some questions here. Is it a gas station or convenience stores? What is the idea on the bottom portion, like right along sixty, eight, is it sixty-eight? Yeah, sixty-eight dial. And I'm not finished, but I just want to ask that.
Yeah, we've, we've kind of taken that, the look of that, the South Forty development. We think that, that could fit in that area and service the residents along there. It's just off the, South Forty is, what's off?
Yeah, Wapbee Road, off Wapbee Road down by, by Pinnacle. Mission, the Mission, yeah, no frills in that area.
And the other question I have to commend you on going door-to-door, it's very important. You get a hundred here of people commenting and talking, and I think that's quite impressive. But now, from the area you're talking, going north, that would still remain industrial kind of thing. That's what the plan would still without change. If anything change happened, that would still stay the same.
You mean, north of our property?
Yes. Like, because I heard it could be a chance if something could change, if we changed this, it will. Administration asked that, but then the other one building you were talking about, Harvey, is Center Construction helped build that. They were concrete, six-inch walls. I think that's very good for fire. It was eight inches outside and six inches internal. So, what kind of, these buildings here are going to be built with a railroad track? Are they going to be wood structure? It's a big thing here.
If I may comment on that, though, my understanding is if you have a spillage and you're calling for an evacuation, whether you're in a concrete building or a tent, it's not going to make any difference. It's, you're still going to have to evacuate if you're within that certain distance.
But what's it like for, like with a train with vibration and everything as well in a home? There's some studies on that. That's where I'm getting at on that for construction code. And, but I have to, just to commend you on that. I have questions for administration on going door-to-door.
Okay. Thanks very much, Counselor McLean. I see Counselor Kropen.
Thanks, Mayor Given. I didn't know we had a ward system, Kevin. I know quite a few people over there, too. Just as little information, Mayor Given, I've spent a few nights in Canmore, and they have beautiful development right alongside the tracks. And when the trains do come by, it is time to get out. Have we had, this is for administration, have we had any?
At this point, at this point, I'm going to stop. Questions for administration will come after we have an opportunity to ask the delegation questions, so this is for the delegation.
I guess this one will be for the delegation. Are you planning on a crossing on Eighty-Fourth Avenue?
No, that's not within the bounds of our property, actually.
But you could do it if it was, no, that's fine.
Okay. Thanks very much. I see Counselor Wong.
Thank you very much, Mayor Given. My question to the delegation is, have you considered in your development plan access for pedestrian traffic when it comes to access to schools, parks, and other amenities? And where would that exist?
We haven't, that concept would be taken into account likely in the, at the outline plan stage. So, at this current juncture, we're, we're looking at kind of an overall land use. And, and the reason we haven't done that, we, we did start down that road, but as soon as we found that planning was not in support, we decided this was, get the first step out of the way. Once this is completed, then at that time, we look, but absolutely, I mean, pedestrian crossing on Ninety-Second Street and also Sixty-Eighth will be important and, and something that will be considered.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much. Last opportunity to ask any questions of the delegation. And I don't see anybody else in the queue, so, gentlemen, unless there's anything else that you wanted to add?
No, I don't think so. Thank you very much for letting us speak tonight. Thank you.
Thank you very much for coming forward. Thank you. Okay, so this now is the last opportunity to, oh, sorry, excuse me, I'll ask if there's anyone else who'd like to come to the table to speak in favor of the proposed development? Sure, please come forward and just state your name and, for the city clerk, so she can record it.
Hello, my name is Jared Holmquist. I live right at the crossroads, if you could pull that map up, actually. Right at the edge of the red and the, yeah, right across the road, my house backs on to that section of land. When we moved into Grand Prairie, we had a, we had a quarter section outside the city, and we actually moved into Center Court when we moved into town, not realizing the proximity of the tracks. So, that was interesting with three kids at eleven o'clock at night when the train rolls through, and we had all the windows open because they have lovely buildings with in-floor heating that the temperature wasn't regulated yet. So, my kids thought it was great, and we thought we'd gone somewhere that we shouldn't have. But the structure of the building was close, and the noise proximity, we just ended up moving further south in the city, and it's not really a whole lot different, other than there's not a ricochet between the commercial property and that high-rise building anymore. My concern with not changing the, the proposed industrial section at this point is that my house is right there, and I'd much rather have, you know, other residents and, and lighter commercial and things that would service, actually service well that community instead of industrial property, which continues up further north beyond that. As the delegation brought up, the proximity to the tracks, as far as Center Court goes, and I don't even know, buildings in the hospital are probably closer than what they're proposing, to the proximity of the tracks. But the tracks go all the way through the city, and I brought it up with, with Mayor Given, the, my biggest concern is the crossing, not necessarily the proximity to the tracks, because I think as far as noise goes, that's a bigger concern of me as a resident in that community, is that engineer, as he blasts through town, that's the biggest noise, and that was the biggest noise at Center Court. As far as vibration goes, it wasn't bad at all, other than my wife and I had a bit of an argument as to who was moving the rug across the floor. But we didn't notice it, and it was very subtle, but it must have just been the right frequency of, of vibration. But that's, that's my concern with this, is the, is that that's going to end up as a yard that's messy right across my fence. And who knows, the, the contaminants, I'm more concerned with, with light industrial than what's being hauled in the cars. And I don't know if that's being considered at this point as to what's being, what is potentially stored on that light industrial land, as opposed to what is coming through the land on the tracks, which is a considerable distance from the, the current residence and the proposed residence. That's, I think, all I have to say.
Okay. Thanks very much, Mr. Holmquist. Is there anybody that'd like to ask the delegation any questions? No, I see one, Counselor Roderick.
Thanks, Mayor Given. Where's Center, where's Center Court?
It was mentioned, it's further north, right by the crossing of, what's, a Hundredth as it comes through. It's just north of the, it's, the, the delegation brought it up, it's only about a thousand or fifteen hundred meters north of the, of the crossing there.
If I'm thinking of it correctly, it's the two new apartment buildings that are just right over here, south of the Macs. Is that the one that we're all talking about?
Yeah, that's correct. Yeah, it's red, red buildings.
Red and gray, yeah. Final site. Okay. Okay. If they're, I see Counselor McLean.
Thank you, Mayor Given. I'm glad that's the new one, the second phase is just about to start being moved into.
Yeah.
So, I want to ask you that, because you live there. The only thing I've seen downfall there, your self-containment, there was a fire in one unit, it could be good, concrete walls throughout, or they're actually good buildings. You still felt a little bit of movement?
No, we didn't. That's what I was, we didn't feel movement, but it must have, there must have been some sort of vibration, because that rug was moving across that carpet floor.
Because that's why I brought it up with, before Harvey and Scott about construction, if you're going to build a frame wall, or you're going to do a concrete wall. So, thank you for that. I helped build a little bit of that, so I have one to talk about.
Yeah. No, the biggest, the biggest irritant, I guess, was when the windows were open, because as far as the construction goes, it seemed to be well-contained as far as noise and vibration went, but...
And they should put an AC in the units.
Yeah. We were a corner unit, so it wasn't so bad. Wrong corner, though, right, right at the tracks.
Okay. Thanks very much. I don't see any other further questions for the delegation. Mr. Holmquist, thanks very much for coming and presenting today. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
So, last time, for anybody that'd like to present in favor of the development, the proposed development, and would ask you to come forward, and I see somebody coming forward. So, please just introduce yourself, and welcome.
My name is Sanjay Podolsky, and I'm a property owner in that neighborhood. I also have a family that lives in this neighborhood. I asked them, I asked my son my question, some questions regarding to the noise that comes from the railroads. And if anything, that he mentioned that this is actually putting him to sleep. So, I also noticed that a lot of the buildings, apartment buildings, hotels, along the, the Calgary Trail in Edmonton, is located right next to the tracks. And I actually stayed in a couple of those hotels, and it never seemed to be an issue. One thing that I, because I know of some neighbors in that area, Prudential have provided me with a picture of this, which you councils probably have that picture there. No? And it shows the industrial zoning, which, a little bit further down the road, which shows some tanks, and I'm not a hundred percent positive what, what could be in those tanks, which could also create a little bit of a danger zone for any type of explosions, if that was to stay as, as this industrial zoning there. So, I asked also the residents who are chasing along right to the Ninety-Second Street, and every one of them was in favor of seeing some other residents and across the, the street there, but not, none of them wanted to see this type of industrial buildings there. And automatically, or bottom line, you might say, is if, if the people, if the, if this, if the subdivision was to go ahead, and people were to purchase an apartment or, or a condominium there, or, or any type of unit, it'll be automatically their decision if they want to be in the area where they would hear some noises or not. So, perhaps once, if that, if that is, if that is accepted, and the development is to go ahead, the people who are purchasing those properties will make that decision if they want to live there or not.
Okay. Thank you very much. Thank you for the presentation. Any questions for the delegation? Seeing none, I think you're off free. Thanks very much. Thank you. So, I'll call again if there's anybody else that would like to speak in favor of the presentation, the proposed development or rezoning. Excuse me. One more time for anybody in favor. Seeing none, then I'd ask if there's anybody that would like to speak in opposition, anybody that'd like to speak against the proposal. I'll call one more time if there's anybody that'd like to speak against the proposal. And I don't see anybody coming forward. So, at this time, at this time, I would have one final round of questions for administration. So, an opportunity to ask, for council to ask questions of administration. I see Counselor Augustin.
Thank you, Mayor Given. For our Protective Services Department bill, possibly, have you, has there been any serious incidents in the, in the train, nine track, what do you call that? Where they, where they're loading, loading zone, loading train, loading zone? Switched train. Has there been any, I know there's been incidences around town at a couple of different places, but...
Director of Protective Services?
Certainly. Mayor Given, yes, there have been a number over the course of the last thirty-seven years that I'm aware of. So, we've had everything from major hazmat incidents at that yard, right through the fires in boxcars in that yard, and minor spills and, and problems within the yard due to switching, and in some cases, going off the tracks. So, there've been a number over the course of that, you know, long history, if you will.
Has, has anybody been hurt?
I can't say that we've had any injuries, though.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Roderick.
Okay. Thanks very much. I see Counselor Kropen.
Thanks, Mayor Given. Do we have any other industrial business, IB, I believe you called it, in the, in the city of Grand Prairie, anywhere else?
For administration, Mr. Johnson?
Yes, there are, thank you, Mayor Given. Yes, there are a number of examples of industrial business in the city, offhand. There is a ribbon of industrial business that will be behind the Future Shop. I'm not sure if there's anything that's developed in there. I think there's, there are some construction office buildings in there. With respect to the IB zoning that was discussed north of Ninety-Second Avenue at approximately Ninety-Second, or sorry, Ninety-Second and Ninety-Second, I believe, yes, there is an, an older area that is currently zoned IB, but it was not developed under our, our new standards of the land use bylaw or engineering standards. A lot of that area is, is unpaved. They're unpaved yards. There's no landscaping. There's outdoor storage. So, one could argue that that's not actually a true representation of industrial business. It's a bit of a hangover from an old district that was probably more of a general industrial district. And when we brought our new land use bylaw online, we thought, okay, this is an area that, over time, we'd like to see transition to industrial business. Offhand, that's, that's the only areas that I can think of that are industrial business at this point.
Okay. Thanks very much. Thank you. Counselor McLean?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I, I don't know who to direct us to administration. Just a couple of questions. For me, a pedways are very important. They're neglected in our city, I think, a little bit in some areas. I don't know if they're allowed over railroad trains, so that's question number one. If development's a goal, maybe something can happen.
Counselor McLean, if you, if you have a list of questions, maybe we can get them one at a time.
Two. One, so a pedway, number one.
Thank you, Mayor Given. Well, in the world of engineering, I think everything's possible, but I think it's likely unfeasible as far as having a pedway over the switching yards of that area. I don't see that as a possibility.
Not switching yards, the one lane, not the switching yards, not where there's nine tracks, the one lane. Like, because I know the Center Courts are, they put a fence up, wouldn't, and people would knock out two or three sections in there to cross. But CN has a law about protective, they have to close that. So, there's always, take the shortest route to get to your destination. So, that's where I'm going. Like, I'm not talking about over nine tracks. I'm talking about one track. This area where it's disposed is only one track. If I'm incorrect, there's, so let me know. So, over one track, not nine tracks, sir. Is that, is that possible, more possible than nine, for a pedway, if it was to happen down the road? Just a question. And I have one more.
The, the rail lines and, and switching yards are private property. I guess through consultation with CN, something could possibly happen, but, yeah.
And your second question, Counselor McLean?
Second question. Thank you, Mayor Given. It's construction, like, I wouldn't want to live beside some industrial park. So, this idea of going to... this idea and going to the communities is very good, but I don't know what the materials can be built of, so you say yes to a plan and you don't know the whole plan, so I'm wondering if the details would come further down the line, that's all.
So, uh, what level of detail would we get to see, uh, further development concepts, or a little bit more of what the development would actually look like, I guess? Is that close? Okay.
The development concepts that would come before council prior to construction would be more the lot layout, internal roads, parks, uh, and, and that type of information, servicing. Uh, the actual construction would be left up to Alberta building codes. Uh, they would be required to comply with that. There's no, uh, details in these development documents about it being a concrete wall or stick-built or, or anything like that, nor do we really have any mechanisms to control that. It is, uh, it is, uh, something that's entirely left up to the Alberta building codes, which is a separate process, and council has no involvement in that.
Okay, thanks very much, Mr. Johnson. Uh, so I see next then, Councilor Wong.
Thank you very much, Mayor Given. Uh, my question to administration is, as a general practice, what zoning do we use between commercial and industrial zones to act as a buffer?
Mr. Johnson?
Um, well, actually, um, it's kind of a two-part answer, I would say. Uh, as far as a, a transition between commercial and industrial, um, we have used the industrial business because we do see it as a bit of a hybrid zone in that it does have both industrial and commercial uses, and it does have a, it can have a high standard of appearance and, and design, uh. But, uh, on the other hand, we see that commercial and industrial don't really have that many compatibility issue, or incompatibility issues, so there are some instances where commercial and industrial do actually, um, kind of butt one another. But again, if you look at a lot of the plans that, uh, that are happening on the west side of town that are yet to be built, industrial business has provided that buffer between the commercial arterial district, let's say, and the general industrial district.
Hey, thank you, and I have one more follow-up question, I guess. Because we've heard from a couple of residents is that, uh, they didn't want to see industrial uses across the street from their properties, and it sounded to me like they were talking more about industrial than industrial business. Can you verify that at all? Or give me an example of industrial business?
Yeah, uh, an example, again, of the industrial business district is, uh, the West Side Plaza area. Um, the applicant is right, you can, you can have a spectrum of, of, um, of, I guess, quality and, and appearance and aesthetics. Uh, that is a, a rather good example, I, I agree. Um, the West Side Plaza is by far the most recent and developed area of IB. Other IB that you will see will be behind the Future Shop, uh, area. There's also, trying, trying to think of some other areas. And again, yeah, like, one of the things of the industrial business district is that there is no outdoor storage permitted, so when there was a discussion about tanks and, and chemicals and stuff with the industrial business district, you won't, you won't get that. It, it's, it's much more business-oriented offices, and again, some commercial uses, so, um, there's landscaping requirements, paving of the site, and so on.
Okay, that's clear, thank you. Okay, thanks very much. I see Councilor O'Toole.
This is directed to you, Joe. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, we're not going to see a body shop, we're not going to see welding shops in that area, then?
Just, sorry, at this point, it might be useful if anybody had the permitted and discretionary uses for IB. I don't know if. Mr. City Manager has them, um, and so I'll just go through very quickly. Uh, permitted use would be accessory building or use, animal service facility, minor automotive and equipment repair, broadcasting house, business office support service, commercial recreation facility, commercial school, commercial storage, community recreation facility, contractor, eating end or dining, uh, or drinking facility, essential public service, family or fast food restaurant, financial building, funeral home, gas bar, government services, health facility, uh, I think that gives everybody, uh, restaurant, retail, store, convenience are all under IB. Um, and then there's a list of discretionary uses, um, which would go auto, automotive equipment repair, major, automotive, recreation vehicle sales, rentals, carnival, casino, uh, childcare facility, uh, but I think a lot of these are ones that are discretionary in many different zones, and they're, they're put there. Um, but some that are maybe, uh, general industrial, fleet service, equipment repair and rental, these are all ones, uh, service station, storage yard, uh, vehicle wash facility, major warehouse sales, warehouse distribution and storage, those are all ones, uh, that the zone wouldn't have the immediate right to do. It would be a discretionary use, and it would be discretionary upon administration's recommendation, so I think that just, a couple of people have asked that question.
Okay, uh, just one more question, Joe. Uh, is it a truck route area in that neck of the woods right now?
Mr. Johnson?
Uh, yes, it is Ninety-Second, Ninety-Second Street is, yes.
So we could see an increase of large trucks with that type of development being taken place?
I'm just discussing with Christine here, uh, she's, she advises that the, there, there, it is on the truck route and there could be, um, uh, trucks going to the switching yard as well.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Okay, I see, uh, Councilor McLean in the queue.
Thank you, Mayor Given. Joe, the question I have about codes, and I know it's provincial matter, I'm Jerry McCarpenter, but along the railroad tracks where you have the other two buildings built by Center and Concrete, usually if there was an explosion or something, the fire department was saying, uh, depending on how it was going to be built down the road, if it was to go through, there is issues that city council could relate to down the road in the development of this area, um, if it was to succeed. So that's all I was going at on that issue. I, I understand some of the codes, so.
So, Councilor McLean, this is an opportunity for questions, so do you have a question in there?
And the question, the pedway, I just want to throw this up, and I got other, we got a long area of that railroad track. And of course, there's a big area where they exchange, but there's development going on both sides. Why isn't there's no route? Get to the other side, except you go in a big loop all the way from sixty-eight to a hundred, so that's just something to really think about.
So was that, was that a question, or is that something for administration to think about?
Well, everybody, I would say on that.
So that sounds like a statement.
Okay.
Okay, okay, so last opportunity for questions for administration. Okay, seeing none, then I would close the public hearing and, uh, would call for business arising from the public hearing. Um, and I see Councilor Augustus in the queue.
Thank you, Mayor Given. I'll move second reading of, uh, bylaw C ten sixty-eleven to amend the southeast area structure plan. And, uh.
Thank you very much. So that motion is order, in order?
And, uh, and speaking to that, I, I believe that this, um, this is a good mix and a good use for that area of town that's been sitting for a long time. I think if we don't take this opportunity to, uh, have some potential, potential tax-paying customers on that property, we're going to lose, uh, that revenue. Um, I also believe as far as CN goes, that, uh, there's a lot of, uh, a lot of tracks that, that aren't supervised, at least in the, in the lot nine, uh, in the loading zone. They're there all the time watching the tracks, so I believe it's a little bit safer there. Um, I also believe that, uh, you know, if we turn away tax-paying customers in this property, we, we should probably make the tracks go around the city because they're a pain in everybody's side. So, uh, and, and that, I would like to, and also the, the customer here that we're looking at has, uh, I don't know for sure how much development this, uh, customer has done in the city, but, uh, a lot more than, very, very good developer, and it would, uh, send a message that, I would like to send the message that we want to do business and develop more property in this city by, uh, approving this motion. Thank you.
Thanks very much. So, uh, it is open for debate and discussion. I see Councilor Wong.
Very much, thank you very much, Mayor Given. I'm going to oppose the motion and, uh, encourage other council members to do the same. I just don't like the location of this for a residential, high-density, uh, development. The reason being is it's very landlocked. You've got, uh, rail on one side, which is dangerous, you've got high-speed corridor on the other, which is pretty dangerous, um. And, you know, if you look at trying to provide safe pedestrian traffic down the road, it's going to cost the city some money to do that. We're going to have to enhance some, some lights there, pedestrian, um, crossing or something like that to allow people to get to either parks, schools, or just to do some walking to get some, uh, or to the convenience store, just to get some groceries. Uh, I think that there is a high risk whenever you put a development like this next to a rail yard, and we've heard that, you know, derailments do happen, hazardous material is being transmo, transported. And, uh, the final thing for me is the noise and vibration issues. If, if people are experiencing it in the neighborhood adjacent to this, to the tracks, imagine moving them closer. Um, for, for every distance that you cut in half, the, uh, the noise and vibration increases by four times. And you can talk to residents that live next to the tracks in any building right now, they don't like it. Uh, every time that train sounds the horn, so I don't want to subject future residents of this city to those kind of living conditions. I don't think that, uh, we should be approving this kind of development here.
Thanks very much, Councilor Wong. I see Councilor McLean.
Thank you, Mayor Given. I'm going to support this motion with a little quote there that, uh, I'm looking forward to down the road about pedway and how the construction is going to go forward if it does pass tonight and down the road and stuff. Because this area, I believe, there has been no thought on both sides of building of having a pedway, of getting on each side. And as well, the community that lives in Countryside North and around that area, I believe it would be better for the community with, uh, people living there than, say, a battery shop or something else. I will be supporting this.
Thank you. I see Councilor Crokin.
Thanks, Mayor Given. I also will be supporting this. I don't believe that that property's landlocked. Uh, all the property along there would be landlocked if that was the case. High-speed corridor, I don't see any high-speed corridors there. Uh, I do see, uh, citizens to the east that, um, were in favor, and we had them here. They had some very good reasons, that they would much rather have neighbors there. And I do know with our, uh, winds that blow from the west, if there was industrial in there and there was anything that had any kind of odor, it would blow, uh, into the neighborhoods to the east. As the developer had said, uh, when was asked, the question was asked, would you be developing it in a year, uh, six months, two years? Uh, being, uh, a developer in the city of Grand Prairie and knowing the conditions in the city and the province, that market will dictate, but I will be in favor of this. I think it's a, it's a great opportunity for people to, uh, live.
Okay, thank you very much. Was there any further discussion or debate on the motion? Um, Councilor O'Toole, did you just ring in there? I didn't, it doesn't actually come up on my little thing, but your microphone is on, so, oh, okay.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is a question for Joe, if you just got.
I'm sorry, actually, at this point, we've closed the, uh, public hearing, and so our opportunity for questions is gone, so. This is the time to discuss or debate the, uh, motion that's presented, so no worries, but, uh, unfortunately, we don't have that opportunity now. So it is, discussion or debate on the motion as proposed, and if I don't see anything further, then we'll call for the vote. So we'll call for the vote now. Thank you. And that motion does carry, so we need a motion then to, uh, for third reading? Somebody like to make that motion? Councilor Augustus?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I'll move council, uh, I'll move thir, I'll move third reading of, uh, bylaw C ten sixty-eleven to amend the southeast area structure plan.
Okay, thank you very much. There is no debate on third reading, so we'll call for the vote. Thank you. And that motion does carry as well, so that public hearing is finished, and we'll move on to our next item of business. Bylaw C ten sixty-three dash oh-four to amend the west industrial area structure plan, uh, and then the various amendments that follow that. And so I'd, uh, put to our public works and planning folks.
Thank you, and good evening, Mayor Given and members of city council. My name is Stuart Wright, planner with the city of Grand Prairie. This request, um, actually relates to amendments to three land use planning documents. Two of those are statutory documents, um, being bylaw C one zero six three, which is the west industrial area structure plan. The second being, um, bylaw C eleven hundred, which is the city's land use bylaw. And the third request is for, um, an amendment to the center west business park outline plan, um, which would be by resolution of, um, city council. So just to confirm, um, the actual applications and requests are all in respect of, um, three parcels, being the subject property being lots one, two, and three, block two, plan zero six two five zero one five. And just for council's information, this is a site location plan that identifies where these, um, parcels are located. Um, combined, they have, um, an area of approximately two point seven hectares, that being, um, roughly six point seven acres. So they are located on the west side of Hundred and Sixteenth Street, um, directly south of Ninety-seventh Avenue, bounded to the west by Hundred and Seventeenth Street, and, um, to give council a better understanding. Uh, sorry. Okay, sorry, this image doesn't look like it's coming up. Well, I was going to give you a better understanding of the location, but maybe what I'll do is just go back here, um, and just, um, indicate, um, generally south of Highway forty-three, Costco is located here, um, and the airport, um, over to the northwest. So also, there were some, um, photographs that, um. Sorry, one minute, it's the, um, stick needs to go back in, apparently.
I think council's relatively clear on where it is, given the description of Costco.
Yeah.
There's nobody here that hasn't been to Costco.
Okay, Mayor Given, um, just yet, it's also, um, hopefully, we'll get the other, um, images. So, um, following the, um, site location, um, the first request is, um, the amendment to the west industrial area structure plan. Um, this plan, as, um, my colleague Joe Johnson had mentioned earlier, just gave a hierarchy of the plans, so we've got the area structure plan, a very, very general, um, um, land use document to give, um, generalized land uses, servicing provisions, um, transportation, um, Hundred and Sixteenth Street, sorry. And so, um, presently, within the, um, oh, thank you, Christine, there we go, I think we're back again. There we go. Okay, so, um, yep, land use, um, a couple of images, I'll be very quick here, Mayor Given, just say, um, just some images across the subject property from Ninety-seventh Avenue, um, looking to, um, businesses that are located, um, on Hundred and Sixteenth Street, industrial in nature with the, um, general industrial IG zoning. Then directly to the north of the subject property, to the north of Ninety-seventh Avenue, and these aren't, um, the clearest here, but, um, is, um, a retail store development, um, including Best Buy, Future Shop, and this, um, apparently is what the applicant is proposing for the subject property. And this is, um, directly to the west of the subject property, um, an existing office, um, industrial office building, located again within the IG zoning district. So now, um, to move on, the west industrial area structure plan, the, um, request, um, first request is an amendment to this document. And the requirements of council were to be mindful to approve the request would be an amendment to map four, which is the development concept plan, um, within the document, so this is actually the, um, map that's in, um, the area structure plan at the moment. Subject property is identified here and, um, identified for industrial purposes. And then just directly to the north is, um, commercial development that, um, was referenced with Future Shop, Best Buy, and that is, um, commercial activity identified within the area structure plan. So that's existing within there, and then what the applicant is proposing to do is extend the, um, commercial activity to cover the three subject parcels. The request would also include for the area structure plan amendment to, um, proposed table two that, um, is within the document. This just basically breaks down, um, potential uses, um, between industrial, um, and highway commercial as it's referenced in the area structure plan. So what's just highlighted there for, um, council's information is just identifying what the change. what's just highlighted there for council's information is just identifying what the changes would be, basically taking the 2.7 hectares, moving it from industrial activity to move into highway commercial. The second request is for the center west Business Park outline plan, as I mentioned earlier, that this isn't a statutory document, and it would require resolution of council to amend this planning document. It gives a greater level of detail following the area structure plan as to what potentially is proposed within the plan area. Again, this is what's approved currently within the outline plan, and again, you can see identifying for the actual subject property, the three parcels that is indicated for general industrial. There is provision to reference in both the area structure plan and the outline plan to say that the land use provisions are fairly general in nature and, you know, considered in further detail as it's streamlined through the planning process. So the applicant's proposal with respect to the outline plan is, again, just basically to move this to extend from the north here, the commercial development that exists, to extend it further south to cover the subject parcels for arterial commercial purposes. And again, within the outline plan, there is a proposed development area breakdown, and pretty much the same applies here. It's just basically moving the 2.7 hectares from the general industrial designation to move into the arterial commercial. Then the final request is with respect to the city's land use bylaw. And again, obviously, it applies to the actual use of the land. At the moment, the subject property, the three parcels are all zoned, general industrial IG, and the request that would need to follow would be to actually rezone these to arterial commercial CA. So what's indicated here, the three parcels IG adjoining here to the west, to the south, and also over to the east is general industrial. To the north, north of 97th Avenue is the arterial commercial, and then extending along Highway 43. And then further to the southwest of the subject property is urban reserve. So that's just reserved for future urban land use that will be determined as what's most appropriate, given consideration to different activity. So the recommendation from administration, considering that the actual proposal, it's viewed that to basically extend the commercial activity that exists north of 97th Avenue, south to include the subject parcels, would be compatible with development in the area. It wouldn't conflict with industrial activity that exists adjoining around this property, and also what would be proposed in the future, good access to the property, good exposure from 116th Street. And it's also viewed that it would be an appropriate type of activity for commercial land use, given its proximity to the airport. It's not within the flight path, so that wouldn't be a consideration, but is within the airport vicinity overlay district, which basically requires there that uses need to be, in the first instance, compatible with airport operations so that they don't create nuisance factors, for example, dust, anything that may attract wildlife birds of that nature. And secondly, the actual airport operations would have to be acceptable or suitable for the proposed use. So commercial activity wouldn't be noise sensitive, you know, compared to, say, like residential hospitals, schools. So again, administration considers that it would be an appropriate fit in this location. So after all of that, with regard to the subject properties, lots one, two, and three, block two, plan 0625015, being 11601, 11609, 97th Avenue, and 960117th Street. Administration recommends that city council give second and third readings to bylaw C-1063-04 to amend the west industrial area structure plan. If council is mindful to do that, because there is a hierarchy of plans, so council has to consider that first, then the recommendation would be for council to approve by resolution the amendment to the center west Business Park outline plan. And if that is approved thereafter, and finally at this stage, to give second and third readings to bylaw C-1100-171 to amend the city's land use bylaw. So that's the extent of the information. Obviously, if council has any questions, I'll be pleased to try and assist.
Thanks, Mr. Wright. I would ask if there are any questions for administration at this point, brief questions. We'll have another opportunity. Again, seeing none, then I would ask if there's anyone that'd like to come to speak in favor of the proposed changes? I'll call a second time if there's anybody that'd like to speak in favor of the proposed changes. I'll call a third and final time, seeing none. Then I'd move on to see if there's anybody that would like to speak in opposition to the proposed changes. Seeing nobody making a move, I'll call a second time. Is there anybody that'd like to speak in opposition? And a third and final time. And seeing none, then we'll close with a final round opportunity to ask questions of administration. Stuart, it looks like you covered everything.
Yeah, too much detail, Mayor Given.
If there, if the, Councilor McLean, did you have a question? Okay, here we go. Councilor McLean?
Thank you, Mayor Given. So basically, just going like Best Buy. They're not sure what's going to go there, but it'd be like day use. So, you know, by eight or 10 nights, it's closed up till the morning kind of thing, just like.
Yes, Mayor Given, potentially, that could be the case. It'd be likelihood, commercial activity. It could include restaurants. They would be included in the arterial commercial district, so that could extend into the evening times as well. But the likelihood is, and it's obviously at this stage, it's for, you know, the rezoning to the greatest detail. Then they'll come in with the actual proposals for the development permits. But the expectation, it would be something along the lines of what's to the north, where you see that strip mall of retail development to include potentially retail stores. And like I said, there may be, there may be restaurants included as well.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks very much. Any further questions for administration? Any further questions for administration? Seeing none, then, and this is our last opportunity to ask questions of administration?
Look at me like that.
Okay, seeing none. Seeing none, then we'll close the public hearing, and we'd look for a motion for the business arising from the public hearing. Councilor Rice?
I move second reading of bylaw C-1063-04 to amend the west industrial area structure plan.
Okay, thank you very much. We have a motion for second reading. This is open to discussion or debate. Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Thank you. And that motion does carry. Please carry on, Councilor Rice.
I move third reading of bylaw C-1063-04 to amend the west industrial area structure plan.
Thank you very much. So we'll call for the votes. Thank you. And that motion does carry as well. Councilor Rice, would you carry on with the other further items there?
Sure. Okay, I move that council approve the amended center west Business Park outline plan.
Okay, this is open for discussion or debate. Seeing none, I'll call for the votes. Thank you. That motion carries. Councilor Rice?
I move second reading of bylaw C-1100171 to amend the land use bylaw. Again, it's been outlined. This just keeps it, all the documents reflective of each other.
Okay, thank you very much. That is open for discussion or debate. Seeing none, we'll call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries, and there's a final one there.
I move third reading of bylaw C-1100171 to amend the land use bylaw.
Thank you very much, Councilor Rice. We'll call for the vote on that motion. Thank you. And that motion carries. That was all of our public hearing business. Thank you very much. We move on to unfinished business, of which we have none, and reports. There are no reports to table today. So we move on to committee business, and if we could have a motion for item 9.1, council committee of the whole. Councilor Redburn?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I move council receive the minutes of the council committee of the whole meetings held November 10th and 18th, 2010. These are our two budget session minutes.
Thank you very much. Councilor Redburn, any discussion or debate on that motion to receive these minutes? Seeing none, we'll call for the vote. Thank you. And that motion carries. Would you take care of the business arising, Councilor Redburn?
9.1.
Yes, please. 9.1. Thank you, Councilor Redburn.
Thank you, Mayor Given. I move council approve the 2011 operating capital budget.
Thank you very much, Councilor Redburn. Any discussion or debate on the motion as presented? Seeing none, we'll call for the vote. Thank you, and we have a budget for 2011. Thank you very much. So we move on to item 9.2, public works committee. Councilor Wong, that was you?
Yes, thank you very much, Mayor Given. I move that council receive the minutes of the public works committee meeting held November 30th, 2010.
Thank you. Any errors or omissions in the minutes? Seeing none, we'll call for the votes. Thank you. And that motion carries. Please carry on, Councilor Wong.
I move that council adopt a resolution to participate in an application for the land use framework initiative project submitted by the municipal district of peace, number 135, under the strategic initiatives component of the regional collaboration program, and further that the city of Grand Prairie, if the applicant agrees to enter into, or as a participant, agrees to abide by the terms of a conditional grant agreement governing the purposes and use of the grant funds. And if I could just speak to that really briefly?
Please do.
The upper piece is the next area, which is identified as being part of the land use framework area that's being considered. So upper piece is the area that encompasses Grand Prairie, but it's a massive area. It's very similar to what we're doing with the Wapiti Corridor area, except if you looked at it on a map, our Wapiti Corridor area would look like a P compared to this great big landmass. So in participating in this, all we're saying is that we'd like to submit, or we'd like to be a part of the discussions in terms of providing our input. And there are grants that could be accessed to conduct the study and provide some direction for this land area. So, you know, the city of Grand Prairie could participate in that, and it doesn't really necessarily have to cost us any money. If we choose to enhance that plan down the road, that would come back to council.
Okay, thanks very much, Councilor Wong. So we have a motion on the floor. Any discussion or debate on the motion as presented? Seeing none, we'll call for the vote. Thank you. And that motion carries. Councilor Wong?
Oh, wait.
Excuse me, Councilor Rice?
I issue, it was a request from my employers to all declare conflict of interest.
Thank you very much. So Councilor Rice declares a conflict of interest. Is this, her employer's taken a position on this, and she's left the room? So, Councilor Wong, if you could continue.
Thank you very much, Mayor Given. I move that council direct administration reassign capital funding in the amount of $100,000 from the existing 2011 sidewalk repair and replacement program for the downtown sidewalk repair. And speaking to this, this item was discussed briefly at budget, but it didn't really affect the overall budgeted figure because it's simply a reassignment of the funds. This is, this money would be used to repair a couple of areas in the downtown that are safety hazards. Unfortunately, the downtown sidewalks aren't part of this sidewalk repair and replacement program, so it keeps getting missed. For example, some of the issues that need to be addressed are, when trees in the downtown area are removed, there's the grating where the tree used to be, and right now, we have several spots where there's literally a hole in the ground, creating a tripping hazard. It'll also address other tripping hazards in the downtown area, and this is just a, this is a start in addressing the downtown sidewalks. We will be looking at a larger issue of the downtown sidewalks after the Downtown Association provides us with an overall plan.
Okay, thanks very much. So any discussion or debate, questions, comments on that motion? See, Councilor McLean?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I do believe this is very good. It just takes a parcel of the amount that goes to sidewalks in the city, over a million dollars. We have all our parades down there, street performances, very vital part of our city. So I look forward to saying yes to this, and maybe looking at down the road to more improvements for them.
Okay, thanks very much. Any further discussion or debate? Seeing none, we'll call for the vote. Thank you. And that motion does carry. Could we call in, call back Councilor Rice? And were there any further items from that agenda, Councilor Wong?
I'd be pleased to answer any questions.
Okay, thanks very much. Any questions for Councilor Wong on that public works committee? Seeing none, I, Councilor Rice, I think you had the general government services committee meeting?
Do I move that council receive the minutes of the general government services committee meeting held December 1st, 2010?
Thank you very much. We'll, any discussion, debate, or errors or omissions from those minutes? Seeing none, we'll call for the vote. Thank you. And that motion carries. Councilor Rice?
Okay, the next one is bylaw to amend the airport business operating and parking bylaw, and it's showing a small increase in the parking fees out at the airport. And I would move first reading of bylaw C-981D.
Okay, thanks very much. So there's no debate on first reading. We'll call for the vote. Thank you. And that motion carries. Councilor Rice?
Thank you. I would move second reading of bylaw C-981D.
Thank you. And so on second reading, we can have discussion or debate. I see Councilor Redburn?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I encourage council to support this motion. This revenue increase will be put towards continuing to increase the number of powered stalls at the airport. So that's the reason for the request for the increase.
Okay, thanks very much. Councilor McLean?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I just want to know, Councilor Redburn, how much is the increase going to be?
Seven days ago.
A dollar increase?
Dollar.
Okay.
Okay, so the, just to speak to that, Councilor Redburn didn't have his microphone on, but it's, so it's a dollar per day from seven dollars per day to eight dollars per day. Were there any other rates that were changing in that?
No.
In that proposal? So the weekly rate is staying the same?
No.
Okay, okay. Any further discussion or debate? I see Councilor Crokin?
Thanks, Mayor Given. That was, just on the powered ones, was it not, the increase?
No, I think it's, it's all of them.
Okay, because I know there's a break if you pay by the week or by the 10 days.
Yeah, exactly. And so this is just, this doesn't change the rate for weekly rate, it's just the daily rate that's changing, and it's on all per instance.
Thank you.
Okay, okay. Councilor McLean?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I just, when was the last increase for this?
Two, two years ago, I believe.
2006, I think.
Was it?
Okay, so I see Councilor Redburn?
I think 2006, Kevin. I could be.
Yeah, I thought it was, I thought it was 2008, but we can get that information back to you.
But it's been a couple of years. Thank you. Any further discussion or debate on second reading? Seeing none, we'll call for the votes. Thank you. That motion carries, and Councilor?
I move we have third reading of bylaw C-981D.
Thank you very much. So a motion to have third reading in the same night. This motion must carry unanimously. We'll call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries, and the last one, Councilor Rice?
I move third reading of bylaw C-981D.
Thank you very much. So it's third and final reading. Any, we'll call for the vote. Thank you. And that motion does carry. Councilor Rice, anything else you wanted to highlight from that committee meeting?
Just wanted to highlight that the committee did review a report prepared by our purchasing department, including correspondence from other municipalities, and a report regarding purchasing processes for our RFP evaluations and guidelines. In other words, we wanted to be comfortable that our weighting, when we're reviewing RFPs, is in line with other Alberta municipalities. So we did review that report. It is available if any member of council would like it.
Okay, thanks very much. So we move on to the next set of minutes, which is the environment committee, and Councilor Monroe?
Thanks very much, Mayor Given. I'd like to move that council receive the minutes of the environment committee meeting held December 6, 2010.
Thank you very much. Any discussion or debate, or errors or omissions on those minutes? Seeing none, we'll call for the vote. Thank you. And that motion carries. Please carry on, Councilor Monroe?
Thanks again, Mayor Given. I'd like to make a motion that council discontinue participation in the National Communities in Bloom program for 2011, and further direct the Take Part, pardon me, Take Part, Take Pride Committee to create and implement a tour or self-evaluation program. And just to speak briefly to that, we- And just to speak briefly to that, we had participated from 2004 to 2008 in the National Communities in Bloom program, and I think it was successful at the time. We have taken a couple of years off and done a, I guess, kind of a, it's a Friends of Communities in Bloom evaluation program. There is a cost associated with participating in the Communities in Bloom program. It costs about $10,000 a year, and this Friends program that we had been doing recently is about $2,500 a year. By opting out of the program, we are taking a certain amount of, I guess, responsibility away from our administration, and if we designate the Take Part, Take Pride Committee to work on this, I think that they're more than capable of taking care of this. It should also be noted that one of the members on the Take Part, Take Pride Committee is a former, is former or is still a currently Communities in Bloom's judge. So I think we've got some, some great benefits here. Thank you.
Okay, thanks very much, Counselor Monroe. Any discussion or debate on the motion? Seeing none, we'll call for the vote. Thank you, and that motion carries. Was there anything else that you wanted to highlight from those set of minutes, Counselor Monroe?
Yeah, I would, thanks, Mayor Given. I would just like to add to that, that we did receive a report, or I guess an update on our idle reduction campaign, and I would encourage all councillors and the public to visit the City of Grand Prairie website. There is a pledge form there to, it's just some simple information on how we can help protect the environment, and a simple pledge such as reducing idling time within the city within reason, and I would just encourage everyone to take a look at it and see if you can do your part to help the environment. Thank you.
Thanks very much, Counselor Monroe. So we'll move on to the Protective Services Committee meeting, and I believe that was Counselor Radburn.
Thank you, Mayor Given. So, my voice going here, we have a few motions to deal with. So first, I would move council receive the minutes of the Protective Services Committee meeting held December 7, 2010.
Thank you. Any errors or omissions, discussion or debate on those minutes? Seeing none, we'll call for the vote. Thank you, and that motion carries. Counselor Radburn?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I move that council give bylaw, C-1064E, Business License bylaw, first reading.
Okay, thank you very much. There's no debate on first reading, so we'll call for the vote. Thank you, please carry on, Counselor Radburn.
Thank you. I move that council give bylaw, C-1064E, Business License bylaw, second reading. If I could speak to the motion now, Mayor Given?
Please.
Thank you. I want to, first of all, just speak to the amendments. We have three themes, or three components to the amendments. First of all, it contemplates changing the licensing timing from a January to December timeframe to a May to April timeframe. And this is recommended because I think both for taxi, taxi drivers, chauffeurs, companies, and for city staff, it is more appropriate to do that work when the weather is a little better. And so I thought that that would be useful from both city perspective and, I guess, our taxi industry's perspective. The second theme, talk speaks to the addition of some items that, Taxi Bill of Rights has been contemplated over the last few years, but we have a number of items that would be taxi, that would be in a Taxi Bill of Right already in the bylaw. However, to strengthen the bylaw, administration is looking at adding a section that deals with things like to accept payment by cash debit or accepted credit card, as posted in the car, to provide a quiet atmosphere, to allow travel with an assistance dog or mobility aid, to bail laws, and to allow the driver to refuse fares for a number of reasons. So these would, we think, would strengthen our bylaw and move us towards, we wouldn't need a separate Taxi Bill of Rights, we would incorporate these in our present bylaw with other items already in it. And we think that would be, would help spur even better service. I think when you're talking about service, I think you need to have expectations and have a common knowledge of those expectations. This would delineate those expectations, and there has been some talk that if this, if this was indeed supported, we might, enforcement would work with the industry in terms of can we get it in a form that actually could be posted on the cabs, so that everyone would understand those expectations. The third component deals with, tried to address, I guess, concerns that have been expressed to staff from our public and even some chauffeurs with respect to safety concerns. And so the amendment contemplates that would require hours of service for chauffeurs would require eight consecutive hours off duty in any 24-hour period. Okay? So this is, again, recommended just to address any potential safety issues. I think that we looked at, do you average? But averages, then you don't get a single, we could still have people working 20 hours for a couple of days in a row, even if you averaged over a week, shall we say. So just in terms of operationalizing, I think it's probably the most efficient to leave it, Edmonton has gone this way as well. In this way, then we know that people are getting rest on a daily basis, so that wear and tear, that fatigue doesn't build up over time. So those are the three, I guess, changes contemplated in the amendments. As our delegation spoke today, this doesn't address all the issues relative to the taxi industry, but committee felt this is a start. And as I indicated earlier, the committee is committed to, via motion, to look at other issues related to the taxi industry that have been articulated tonight, and that I shared when I read the motion, the directing administration to bring back a report. So, this doesn't address some of the fundamental issues, but we think this, these are useful in moving towards a safer and better service industry.
Okay, thanks very much, Counselor Radburn. So I call for discussion or debate. I see Counselor Rice in the queue.
Okay, I have a very quick question, Aldrin Radburn. In your direction to administration to prepare a report, looking at the other issues, was there any discussion of looking at options to limit the number of taxis? In other words, there are a couple of cab companies I know that have been in Grand Prairie for many, many, many years, and so was there any direction that they be given some special consideration, or just lumped in with the Johnny Come Latelys?
Counselor Radburn?
Well, thank you, Mayor Given. To Counselor Rice, not really any specifics in that regard. We've left it open at this point. There are some issues we need, that we need to look at relative to the number of taxis, number of taxi companies, licensing requirements, rates. So we really haven't got to that kind of specificity. That will come later.
Okay, I see Counselor Augustusson?
Thank you, Mayor Given. When we talk about rates, I know Edmonton has a lot of flat rate costs from like the hospital to the mall, or from Lawrence House to my house, and the cabs, and comparison to the cost for the meter and the tampering that appears to be going on with the meters. Have we looked at doing any sort of flat rate cost for across the city at all, or is it in the horizon, or is it even an option, or do we want to talk about?
Counselor Radburn?
Thank you. I think that would be contemplated when we get the report, Alex. Like, at this point, we're open for the information, and then committee will look at how we use that information to maybe move towards a more closed industry.
At this point, I think it's fair to say, at this point, the city doesn't control the rates at all.
Correct.
Except to say that they must be posted. It's up to the individual cab companies to set their own rates. The motion actually asked for administration to bring forward some information on, on if the city chose to go another direction, in terms of having more influence in rates. So that would be part of the discussion.
And there are different ways to do that, Alex, too, right? In terms of control rates. So that would be something we'd have to look at as well.
Okay.
Thank you.
See Counselor McLean?
Thank you, Mayor Given. The only question I got to ask Counselor Radburn is that, are we the only open taxi for running the business here right now for rates, not in Alberta, or the city this side? Are we the only one in Alberta? This was brought up.
When the question, when the question was asked to Gary Roth, he thought we were.
Thank you.
That was one of the reasons that led us to maybe get further information.
Okay, thanks very much. I see Counselor Wong?
Thank you very much, Mayor Given. I'm going to speak in favor of the motion, and I recognize that the taxi industry does have some other challenges to deal with, and I was very happy to read the information that was provided to council through the email, because it was very comprehensive, and I was very impressed by it. I believe that this bylaw at least is better than what we're doing right now, because we're offering a little more regulation, but obviously, we do need to do some more work on that, but I think that, you know, this is a good start.
Okay, thanks very much. So any further discussion or debate? I believe that we're on second reading right now, and so this will be the opportunity. Seeing none, we'll call for the vote. Thank you, and that motion does carry. Counselor Radburn?
Thank you. I would move, Mayor Given, that we have third reading.
Okay, thank you very much. So this is a motion to have third reading tonight. This motion must carry unanimously for us to continue on tonight. We'll call for the vote. Thank you, and that motion carries. Counselor Radburn, do you want to finish that?
Thank you, Mayor Given. Finally, then I would move council give bylaw, C-1064E, Business License bylaw, third reading.
Okay, thank you very much. We'll call for the vote. And that motion does carry as well. 5.5.2, Counselor Radburn?
Thank you. I move council award tender T-34323-10 for three 2010 Smeele Custom Side Mount Pumping Apparatus in the amount of $1,977,500 excluding GST to Safe Tech Emergency Vehicles of Coquettlum, BC as the lowest bid meeting specifications. If I could speak to this motion, Mayor Given?
Please, Counselor Radburn.
There are five, were five bids, and two were disqualified, one because the pricing wasn't valid for the required 60 days. One did not meet the technical specifications, but there were three other bids. This is consistent with the revised Fire Department Fleet Replacement Plan that was, we looked at actually about a year or so ago. These are three identical front-line attack engines apparatus, and two of them are replacement to other, to other vehicles, and one is for the new fire hall. Funding is, has been planned for over a number of years. I think $55,000 from the Fire Equipment Replacement Reserve, $1 million from Alberta Municipal Infrastructure Grant, and $860,000 plus from the fleet reserve. So this, I guess, our Fire Master Plan, we're moving forward with respect to the third fire hall, along with that was planning in terms of monies for equipment to equip our three fire halls. This is a kind of a culmination of that planning. Thank you, Mayor Given.
Thanks very much, Counselor Radburn. Any discussion or debate on the motion? Seeing none, we'll call for the vote. Thank you, and that motion carries, and we'll move on, please.
Thank you. I would move council appoint Ms. Zess Miller as the Chamber of Commerce Representative on the Downtown Parking Advisory Committee. The previous chamber representative on this committee has moved away, apparently, and so this is the chamber's recommended replacement.
Okay, thanks very much. Any discussion or debate on the motion? Seeing none, we'll call for the vote. Thank you, and that does carry.
Thank you, Mayor Given, thank you. I move council appoint T. Rochon, M. Perry D., K. Miller-Latondre, and E. Van Schur as pest inspectors according to the provisions of the Agricultural Pest Act for a term from January 1, 2011 to December 31, 2011. These are annual appointments. These are three bylaw enforcement officers and one animal control officer. This ensures our legal, we have the legal right to handle complaints relative to pests. These particular staff have been trained by Alberta Agriculture, and we obviously use Alberta Agriculture as a resource as well, but this allows us to, practically speaking, to do and deal with any complaints that come up with respect to pests.
Okay, thanks very much. I see Counselor Crokin in the queue.
Thanks, Mayor Given. Do, do any of these officers leave the city limits to act on any other pests that might be just outside the limits?
Counselor Radburn?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I will say no, but I'll ask Bill Walker if he would confirm or not that.
Thank you, Mayor Given. I believe you're correct. I don't believe we do on this one, although we do have some agreements with the county to share services on some of the other special services the peace officers can enforce either in or outside of the city. But I don't believe we've actually transferred this, it would take an appointment out in the county to be able to do that.
Okay, thank you very much. Any further discussion or debate? Questions or comments? Seeing none, we'll call for the vote. And that motion does carry. One final one, Counselor Radburn?
Finally, yes, thank you. I move council enter into an agreement with the Grand Prairie District SPCA for operation of the Regional Animal Pound for 2011 in the amount of 202,528 plus GST. Actually, the SPCA has proposed the contract amount to be the same as 2010. The intent is that the next contract with SPCA will be a three-year contract that would be consistent with our next three-year budget. So this will get us to that three-year budget. For new members of council, fairly recently, I believe, the last year, we used to be, it used to be a 60-40 split with the county in terms of we were 60-40, we were 60, they were 40. Now it's 50-50 with the, with the building of the new, new facility. So I guess this is, gets us there and allows service to, service to maintain the same at no increase in cost for 2011.
Thanks very much, Counselor Radburn. Any discussion or debate on the motion? Seeing none, and call for the vote. Thank you, and that motion carries. Counselor Radburn, was there anything else that you wanted to highlight from that agenda?
No, thank you.
Thanks very much. Counselor Augustusson, I believe you have Community Development Committee?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I'll move that council receive the minutes of the Community Development Committee meeting held December 7, 2010.
Thank you. Any errors or omissions in those minutes? Seeing none, we'll call for the vote. Thank you, and that motion does carry. Please carry on, Counselor Augustusson?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I'll move that council approve the city enter, into a funding agreement with the Family Community Support Services of Alberta, sorry, Support Services and Alberta Children and Youth Services for a period of January 1, December to December 31, 2011.
Thank you very much. Would you like to speak to the motion?
Not at this point. I think Jane has a, might have a few things to, if there's any questions?
Okay, Director of Community Services?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Given. This is the annual agreement that the City of Grand Prairie enters into with FCSS for, with Alberta Children and Youth Services.
Okay, thanks very much. Any discussion or debate? I see Counselor Rice in the queue.
I think this, this is a program that we have as a community, all across Alberta. Communities have to make sure the province continues. This provides 80/20 funding for different program areas, with the province providing 80% and us providing 20%. And this motion, as I understand it, is our agreement to pay our 20% for basically $257,000 in exchange, the province will pay slightly over a million, and that covers, I think, nine or 10 different programs, so excellent program.
Thanks very much, Counselor Rice. Any further discussion or debate on the motion? Seeing none, we'll call for the vote. And that motion carries. Please carry on, Counselor Augustusson?
Thank you. I'll move that council award tender T-5943410 Coca-Cola Center North Arena Bleachers to Longbow Sales Incorporated in the amount of $130,900 excluding GST as the lowest bid meeting specifications.
Thank you very much. Any discussion or debate on the motion? Seeing none, we'll call for the vote. Thank you, and that motion carries. Please carry on, Counselor Augustusson?
Thank you. I'll move that council award tender T-5843410 Coca-Cola Center Ice Plant Upgrades to Gateway Mechanical Services, Inc. in the amount of $142,000 excluding GST as the lowest bid meeting specifications. GST as the lowest bid meeting specifications.
Thanks very much. Any discussion or debate? Do I see councillor Rice in the queue?
Well, why are we upgrading? The Coca-Cola Center isn't that old. Why is their equipment needing to be upgraded?
This is more of a, I believe it's, we understand is it's, it's a preventive maintenance and it'll help keeping the ice cooler. And it's, that, that's actually, that arena's six years old, eight years old, so it's more of a maintenance thing than actual capital investment.
Okay.
I believe there's also an energy savings component as well, that, an efficiency component that should see a savings of 20%, councillor Augustus, was that right?
It was a fairly substantial figure, yes.
Okay, thanks very much. Any further discussion or debate on the motion? Seeing none, we'll call for the vote. Thank you. And that motion carries. Please carry on, councillor Augustus.
Thank you, Mayor Bill Given. I'll move that council approve the 2011 to 2015 agreement between the city and the Grand Prairie Soccer Association for the operation of the Grand Prairie Soccer Association facility.
Thank you very much. Any discussion or debate on the motion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Thank you. That motion does carry. Please carry on.
Thank you. I'll move that council approve the 2010 to 2020 extension agreement between the city and the Grand Prairie Soccer Association for the lease of the rotary fields.
Any discussion or debate on the motion? I see none, but I do have a question. At the committee meeting, I asked a question of the operational costs of the fields and whether the soccer association covers the operational costs for watering and those sort of associated issues. And at the time, administration couldn't answer that question, so I would ask again and, yeah, so I'd ask again, and if it's not possible to get that information tonight, I would like to see it. So to the director of community services, do you have an answer for us tonight?
Mayor Given, no, I don't, but I'll certainly get that to you by tomorrow.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay. Any further discussion or debate? Seeing none, we'll call for the vote. Thank you. And that motion carries. Councillor Augustus, you got a couple left, eh?
Thank you. I'll move that council approve the 2011 agreement between the city and the county of Grand Prairie with funds directed to the leisure center operating budget.
Okay, thanks very much. Any discussion or debate on the motion? Seeing none, we'll, oh, councillor Redburn?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I believe, Jane, 220,000? What was the number?
So a question for administration, what's the value of the contract?
Yes, Mayor Given, it is $227,356.38.
And there was a slight increase?
Yes.
From the previous year?
Yes, Mayor Given, that would be 3.5% over last year.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, any further discussion or debate on the motion? Seeing none, we'll call for the votes. Thank you. And that carries. And one final one.
Thank you, Mayor Bill Given. I'll move that council approve RFP 16410 for the multiplex scoreboard and timing equipment to Swiss Timing Omega in the amount of $123,720 excluding GST as the highest evaluating proponent.
Okay. Any discussion or debate on the motion? Seeing none, we'll call for the vote. Thank you. And that motion carries. Was there anything else that you wanted to highlight from those minutes, councillor Augustus?
Um, not at this point, but I'd be happy to entertain any questions.
Okay, I think you do have a question. Councillor Rice?
I was intrigued by agenda item number four. How, how could the equipment at the museum get old?
Apparently it, apparently it does. I kind of had the same question myself. We, we were able to continue with the, this, this equipment doesn't really have any antique status. It's steel, basically steel, older equipment sitting in, in the, in the museum area, and it's starting to be a hazard for kids to walk on and play on and stuff, so they've come to an agreement and given it to other, other museums in the, in the neighboring municipalities. TB Creek took a couple older, there was a list, actually, a couple, and Cluskin Park took some stuff too, so it is being utilized in the, in the, in the community, neighboring communities is not being, you know, disposed of or thrown away by no means.
Thank you.
See councillor Wong?
Thank you very much, Mayor Given. Just a follow-up question on the leisure center contributions from the county. Is it possible to get some information in terms of how that number was determined? Is it a percentage of operations? And if it is, what, what is that percentage that can be sent out?
Okay, thanks very much. Director of Community Services?
Yes, actually, I can answer that right now. It was a 3.5% increase over what they had contributed for 2010, and that's been typical of the increases over the past few years.
Okay, and, and what is that in terms of a percentage of our operations?
For the director of community services?
Mayor Given, I don't have the answer to that, but I'll certainly find that one out.
Okay, thanks very much. Okay. Seeing nothing further on that set of minutes, we go on to correspondence, and we have no items of correspondence today. Delegation business, and I believe each of the delegation's business has been handled. We did have the presentation of the 2011 Beyond Faces calendar, but maybe we could have a motion to receive that presentation for information if somebody cared to make that motion. I see councillor Rice?
I move that we receive the presentation from the Grand Prairie Youth Council for information, and in speaking to that motion, encourage everyone to go to their kickoff tomorrow evening.
Thanks very much, councillor Rice. We have a motion to receive for information, the presentation, and discussion or debate. Seeing none, we'll call for the vote. Thank you. Dale, now you can go home. Received for information, you're okay. I don't believe there are any further delegation business. My apologies to council. At the start of our council meeting today, I neglected to ask if there were council member reports on the different committees, and so if somebody has a report on a committee that they're council representative, I'd ask you to ring in. I see councillor Rice?
No.
Okay, I see councillor Redburn?
Thank you, Mayor Given. Actually, I have two, if that'll be all right?
Yeah.
First of all, Grand Spirit Foundation, we had, we had our semi-annual board meeting. There is a management committee meeting and a board meeting. This was a board meeting. Four things to highlight, four items to highlight. One, that we did have election of officers of our management committee. I think five or six are, are stipulated, and then there's a couple others that are voted on. In terms of election of officers, Richard Harp was elected chair again, and yours truly is the new vice chair of the Grand Spirit Foundation. Second item, our lodge management and home care meeting, had a meeting, and Wild Rose was approved for 24 hours personal care aid coverage. So now that is in place for all three lodges in Grand Prairie, so that was good news. Our family housing project moved in. Wild Rose Villas Expansion, they're moving in. Most have moved in, and Amis Court is still due March, April next year in Beaver Lodge. And finally, our budget was approved. There is a requisition, slight requisition increase. We've slight rent increase, and we used some reserves to balance the budget. Thank you.
Thanks very much, councillor Redburn. You said you had a second?
I did, and I, it's not on the list, but I just, if I could report on the initial meeting of the Economic Development Advisory Committee, I would appreciate that.
Please.
Thank you.
Please.
Our meeting was to get to know each other and to talk about how we're going to operate. So in that sense, it was a bit of an organizational meeting. Shannon Nelson was chosen to be our chair. We reviewed the city's, Brian actually reviewed for us, the city's economic development plan and the business visitation plan. And the committee is focusing on, as the terms of reference stipulate, we're focusing, the committee's focus will be to help Brian prioritize and operationalize that plan. We're going to meet every two months, so we're meeting it in January. And during the meeting, Brian reminded us of the Growing the North Conference, January 19th to 21st, so our committee members were encouraged to, to attend, and so we would encourage any persons from the community to attend. It's a planned, it's a Northern Region Economic Development Conference at the Tech Center in January. Thank you, Mayor Given.
Thanks, thanks very much, councillor Redburn. Councillor Rice?
Is that the one with Mike Holmes coming?
Councillor Redburn, go ahead.
It is, actually. There's James Shepherd, Canfor President and CEO, President of the Canadian subsidiary of Warehouses there, Dr Gervais, Professor of Agriculture and Resource Economics, Gary Maher, Alberta's representative in Washington, Alberta and U.S. Relations, has been actually invited, Mike Corey, CN Rail Senior Vice President for Western Region, Banquet Speaker, Premier Stelmach has been invited, invited, President, oh yes, Nigel Chimpko, President Chimpko Consulting on Power Aggregation and Distribution, Honorable Ron Renner, Minister of Environment on the Water Act, has been invited, John Gorman, Vice President of Halliburton Group, Canada, on Canada's Energy Outlook for 2011, Honorable Rob Maryfield, Federal Secretary of State for Transportation, on transportation in the Northern Gateway, and Mike Holmes, Canada's most trusted contractor and host of homes inspection. So it should be a good conference.
Thanks very much for that update, councillor Redburn. We'll make sure to add that to our list, I think, for regular roundtable reports. Thank you. I see councillor Wong?
Thank you very much, Mayor Given. I have two items to report on. First is the Grand Prairie Regional Tourism Association. At our last budget meeting, or at our last board meeting, sorry, we reviewed the budget for the 2011 year, and there was a concern over the increase in the lease cost for Centre 2000, and also for a provincial funding shortfall from a Travel Alberta of about $19,000. Those matters concerning the lease were brought forward to the General Government Services Committee for discussion. The tourism board felt that, also felt that the visitor information services that they were contracted to provide were being subsidized by the destination marketing organization part of their operations. So the concern was really that the VIC contract wasn't being funded at cost recovery. But since this is a city contracted service, GGS will be examining this contract agreement. I believe the matter is coming up for discussion at this Wednesday's General Government Services meeting, so I'm happy to hear about that. Also, as a matter for information, we've had the misfortune of the executive director of Grand Prairie Regional Tourism Association submitting her resignation due to personal reasons. So the association will be looking at filling that role sometime in the future or doing some restructuring early in the new year, so it will be operations as usual once, once that gets sorted out.
Okay, thanks very much.
Hey, on Wednesday, December 8th, the Wapiti Corridor Planning Society held a board meeting. The society has finalized the interviews of the stakeholders, and it's moving towards the data processing phase. Just for information for council, of the people and organizations that were interviewed, it represented over 8,478 people. The users were broken down by residents as well, 72% of which, of the Wapiti Corridor users were identified as living in the city of Grand Prairie, with the remaining 28% split between the County of Grand Prairie and the MD of Greenview. Now, these numbers don't include industry stakeholders, which also, if you look at Ainsworth and Warehouses, they're large employers, as well as the gravel pits, they're large employers of that area. So we're going to be compiling that information and adding that to this data. Just so we get a visual understanding of what the uses are like in the area, we're going through a mapping exercise, and this is actually a pretty fun exercise. We have these giant four-foot maps, and we were crowded around the table trying to draw out, you know, what the land use, land uses are for each area, but it's, it's amazing that when you look at a map that size and all the little minutia of detail that you have to get in there, it was almost impossible for us to get anything accomplished, so we were, we're actually going to be sent home with these maps now. So every one of us is going to have at least four of these four-foot maps that we can work out on our own, and then we're going to bring it all back and compile it. So it's going to be a really fun exercise, especially because, you know, once we get done with this, we're going to get an idea of not only what the current uses look like, but what we would like it to look like in 50 years. And I guess the last thing to report on is that we're going to continue to work through this process, but we're anticipating that a draft concept plan be finished by about March 2011.
Okay, thanks very much. Councillor Wong? Councillor O'Toole, I see in the queue?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I did attend the River of Death and Discovery Dinosaur Museum Society meeting. Unfortunately, there wasn't enough for a quorum, but we did discuss some of the plans that were taking place this summer. And all I can say to you, because there's a little bit of a confidentiality thing here, that it's going to be one of the biggest fundraisers to hit the Grand Prairie area in a long time. So I'll leave it at that.
Wow, what a, what a lead-in.
Yeah, it's a teaser. Now you got to wait till next month.
Thanks very much, councillor O'Toole. Councillor Crokin, I see that you're next in the queue.
Thank you, Mayor Given. That was a little earlier. It was a question I had of councillor Redburn. When you had the, the general meeting, Grand Spirit Foundation, did requisitions to municipalities, did it come up? Because I know citizens have said, you know, that's an extra tax, and we do pay taxes to the provincial government, and could you get that off my tax bill? And I, I know it's, it's something that's provincial, so...
Councillor Redburn?
No, that's how the Grand Spirit Foundation is funded, with that requisition. With that requisition. So it's going to stay on your tax notice as a separate entity.
Okay, thanks very much. So any further council member reports from the agencies or boards and committees? Again, my apologies for not asking in advance of the meeting, council. I won't let that happen again. And we would move on then, if there were no further ones. I'd move on to roundtable, and we'd start with councillor McLean.
Thank you, Mayor Given. December 1st, I had my first downtown association board meeting, and it went over quite well on some issues we learned. I think they'd be, what happened tonight, quite happy. There were some areas that needed to be looked at, the sidewalks where trees were taken out of, and I look forward down the road for a few more meetings with, with this group. And a lot of things happened downtown. Parades, street performers, it's a main part of our core, so. That's it. I also attended on December 7th Meals on Wheels. I was, we were shocked to learn that they do 5,000 meals in the, last year alone in the city of Grand Prairie. Also, on December 9th, we all had a meeting about the future implications or plans on the site of the York, so we'll go there because it's in the process now. And on December 10th, I was honored to be with councillor O'Toole and have a tour of the water and waste management treatment site, and also go to the landfill, which I had been in the landfill before, but the waste and water treatment, I have to say, I was quite impressed, and I wouldn't mind doing another one in the summer when it's warmer. So that's all I can say. Thank you.
Thanks very much, councillor McLean. Councillor Wong?
Thank you very much, Mayor Given. On Thursday, December 2nd, I attended the United Ways Heroes Luncheon with much of the rest of council. Saturday, December 4th, was the Christmas party for the Grand Prairie Regional College. Monday, December 6th, I was here at City Hall for the flag raising ceremony in celebration of the 44th anniversary of the Canada Winter Games. On Tuesday, December 7th, I attended the Meals on Wheels Volunteer Appreciation Luncheon. On Wednesday, December 8th, I attended the Community Foundation Year End Reception. Also on Wednesday, December 8th, I attended the Canada Winter Games Reunion Celebration at the Montrose Cultural Center. On Friday, December 10th, I was at City Hall for a tender opening. Friday, also on the 10th, I attended the Christmas Party for Community Futures, and what they tell me is they voted me as Board Member of the Year, not because of my performance on the board, but because of my performance on the karaoke floor, apparently. We stayed, we stayed there for about four hours singing a bunch of karaoke. It wasn't pretty, but it was pretty much fun. It was a lot of fun. Finally, on Sunday, December 12th, I participated in the 12K The Christmas Run at the Muscat CP Park. I just wanted to thank a couple of city staff members who volunteer for the GP Run Walk Club. They do such a great job. It's Robert Carroll and Lorna McNeil. Robert had the, the paths in Muscat CP Park cleared for this event so that no one would get injured, but, you know, it's something that we, we do several times a year as regular maintenance, but it was timed especially well for this occasion, and I just wanted to thank them because, you know, they, they're, these are a couple of busy people, and they still get out in the community and volunteer their time.
Thanks very much, councillor Wong. Councillor Rice?
I attended the Prairie Gallery Pie Luncheon, and... I attended the Prairie Gallery Pie Luncheon, and I know that councillor O'Toole was expecting to go and have a big chunk of apple or rhubarb, but in fact, it stands for Preserve, Inspire, Explore. And Prairie Gallery did raise $99,000 that day, 75,000 of which was from Canadian Tire, and I really commend them for playing such a big role in ensuring we have such a strong cultural community in Grand Prairie. I attended the Chamber of Commerce Luncheon Learn for the presentation on Aqua Terra done by the new chairman. I attended the United Way Heroes Lunch. Attended the Volunteer Service Bureau Volunteer Breakfast. Wonderful pancakes they make at the Golden Age Center. I think it was the Rotary Club that cooked those. They were great. Apparently, they have a crew that does that. I'm assuming from the noise across the table that Alder and Radburn would be one of that crew. No. Okay. I attended the Aqua Terra Christmas Party, attended the Meals on Wheels Volunteer Appreciation, an excellent event. Came here for the raising of the Canada Games flag, and Worship did a great job. And I did a walk-on part at Elevation Theater, and I encourage all of you who don't have plans for Saturday night to get your tickets for Elevation, so you can Friday night see his worship doing a walk-on part as Officer Pudney. He has lines doing everything.
Councillor Rice, I heard you brought the house down as Officer Pudney, so obviously I have some big shoes to fill. Thanks very much, councillor Rice. Councillor Monroe?
Thanks very much, Mayor Given. December 2nd, I took a tour of the art gallery. Robert graciously toured me around, and it kind of put things into context. The place is still heavily under construction, but the vision is clearly coming together. You can see how it's going to integrate, integrate well with the library. I think it's going to be a world-class facility. December 2nd, I attended the Chamber of Commerce AGM and watched them bring in the new chair of the Chamber of Commerce, Dave Cook, who is with Ainsworth, I was going to say here in town, but out in the county. Volunteer Services Bureau Breakfast, I was at that as well, too, where Roy Bickle was honored as the volunteer of the year. Nice to see, and that's with all the work that he's done as far as the Pipestone Creek Bone Bed. Nice to see him honored. I was at the Meals on Wheels Luncheon on December 7th as well, too. Attended the reception at the Cultural Center for the Canada Games reunion reception. And I was also at the Art Gallery Luncheon, where they managed to raise all that money. One last thing, I'll just go back to that Volunteer Services Bureau Breakfast that Helen was at, and she was commenting about the Rotary BBQ crew. I am actually on that barbecue crew, but they never call me to come and cook, so. They didn't even tell me they were going to be there, so anyways, that's all I have to report.
Thanks, councillor Monroe. Councillor Crokin?
Thank you, Mayor Given. On November 30th, I attended a CMHC breakfast meeting along with Steve McMinn. The market and developments that are out there, they're struggling to keep up with last year's figures, so CMHC give us a broad spectrum. Then at noon, of course, I went to the Aqua Terra Luncheon Learn meeting at Centre 2000. Andy Beal did a very good job of discussing the things that are happening at Aqua Terra. On December the 1st to the 3rd, I attended Minister Gene Zwadeski's, Minister of Health and Wellness, his conference in Edmonton on behalf of the mayor. Action on Wellness. The main focus was creating environments that support healthier behaviors as one of the most effective ways to reduce chronic disease and future demands for health care and services. One of the startling facts that I will tell you of many, we are educating the first generation of children who may not outlive their parents. And I have one of the only copies, and I'll be giving it to Dr. Pope, of the five-year plan where the Minister Zwadeski said the waiting time in our hospitals are going to get cut substantially, and they're all here. But if you don't have copies of it, you may not see that, so. On December 7th, I attended also the Legion Meals on Wheels. Good job, Mo, good lunch. December 8th, I attended Friends of the Grand Spirit Foundation Meeting. Last year, we raised about $30,000 and are on track for the same this year. Later that day, I attended James Mannor Christmas Tea at the choir from Harry Balfour. They sang for the old folks there, and they had a good time. It was a good job. Later, of course, I was at the Montreal Cultural Center, the Canada Games Legacy, the wine and cheese, that was very good. Glad to see everybody enjoyed the wine. The pie luncheon, I was expecting a pie, too, but I am on that committee, and I didn't know what meant Preserve, Inspire, and Explore. If you want to go over the $99,000, I happen to have a pledge card, Helen. But that's okay. December the 9th, that brainstorming on the vacant land downtown was a very good one. And later that day, the chamber mixer at Echo Audio, good job to Bruce, and those free TVs were really good draws. I couldn't remember winning one, but I did carry one out. On December 11th, I attended, that's okay, Bruce, I think I paid for it. I attended on behalf of Mayor Given, the Grand Prairie Boys Choir presentation of The Father and the Son. It was at the Christian Fellowship Assembly. A great job by Jeannie Vanzberg Purnell. And later, the Prairie Art Gallery Christmas Party, I attended at Mary Quinn's Residence. Ho, 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 good time. And Merry Christmas to you all, and to my friends in Poland. Dobranos to Kristoff and family.
Thanks very much, councillor Crokin. Councillor Gustafson?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I attended the flag-raising ceremony in celebration of the 44th anniversary of the Canadian Winter Games. I also attended the council wine and cheese in celebration of the Canada Winter Games in Halifax. I attended the chamber mixer at the Echo Audio AVU, very good, very good show put on by Bruce Little and his family there. I attended the chamber luncheon, and congratulations to Mr. Dave Cook on taking the helm there and looking after our chamber and our community very well. I, I look forward to our meeting with the city-county, our first city-county joint meeting coming up here in the next near future. And I wish everybody out there a very Merry Christmas and a happy and prosperous 2011, and all the best to everyone. Thank you.
Thank you very much, councillor Gustafson. Councillor Radburn?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I'll quickly go over some of the activities I was involved in the past couple of weeks. November 30th, I went to the Chamber Luncheon, and it was very well-attended. We were bulging at the seams in the Robertson meeting there, and I thought it was very, very useful information. December 2nd, United Way Heroes Luncheon, so just congratulations on the honorary chairs and the board for their efforts, 840,000. Good job. And I also wanted to take this opportunity to thank our staff. By our staff, I mean city staff, those who are on the committee, organizing committee for our staff. They were there at the Heroes Luncheon, so I wanted to thank them. And all of those employees of the city who contributed to the United Way. I also attended the Canada Winter Games Flag-Raising, the Meals on Wheels Volunteer Appreciation Luncheon, and the Canada Winter Games Celebration Reception. It was, I really quite enjoyed it, because I was very integrally involved in the board at that time. And it was neat to be able to talk to, yeah, share stories, and it was fond memories, very fond memories. And it was really great. There were a couple of people who actually, I think Kylie is one of them, Jane, there are others, Derek Hall, who actually worked, were staff of the Games. So it was a good event, and kudos to Mayor Given for planning and having staff involved. Prairie Gallery Luncheon. I also, I attended the MS New Office Open House, just over here in the corner, and the chamber mixer as well. Echo Audio Video. Thank you.
Thanks very much, councillor Radburn. Councillor O'Toole?
Thank you, Mr. Given. I didn't attend the, well, let's start right from scratch. I did attend the Grand Prairie Regional College Howlers Cup Floor Hockey Tournament. I refereed five games and gave the official drop of the puck of the first game. I got to admit, the Grand Prairie Fighter Fighters won the tourney, but the real winners are the Grand Prairie Regional College Student Food Bank and the Stars Ambulance. Once again, they ended up supporting the silent auction, and that was on December 1st. I did attend most of the things that everybody else, the rest of the councillors have commented on. I did attend the Claims Pro Insurance Open House on December 2nd. I also want to bring up a couple more. The Meals on Wheels Volunteer Appreciation Luncheon. It's, I talked to quite a few people when I was there, and it's not just bringing the meals to the people. It's having another person to talk to while they're having the meal, which they like to see. And I think that's what brings the volunteers out. Bringing a person a meal is great, but sitting down and talking to somebody, you can see the lights in their eyes brighten up, so it was a good, good operation there. And once again, I did tour the Aqua Terra sites in Grand Prairie, the wastewater, the freshwater, the landfill, and the Eco Center. And a lot of information and understanding took place on this day, and that was on December 10th. Thank you.
Thanks very much, councillor O'Toole. On Tuesday, the 30th, I attended with the Chamber of Commerce in support of their lobbying trip to the provincial legislature. It was my pleasure to go on behalf of the city of Grand Prairie. I was, I joined Reeve McDonald from the county, Reeve Yellenup from the MD of Greenview, and Mayor Hanson from the town of Beaver Lodge, who also went. And so we spoke to a number of different ministries, including environment, infrastructure, agriculture, and a number of others. And I found it to be a very worthwhile trip. It was a long day. We left on a 7:00 AM flight and got home at about 10:30 in the evening. So we have to thank the Chamber of Commerce for leading that delegation, and particularly thank Emily Drysdale for his work in ensuring that all those meetings were set up. And he certainly spent as much of the day with us as he could. He, cabinet, or, excuse me, they did have caucus meetings, and he was on the floor as well, the ledge, so he was in and out of the room, but we certainly appreciated his presence. On Wednesday the 1st, I attended and brought greetings on behalf of council to the Golden Age Center's seniors dinner. There were probably about 100, over 140 seniors in attendance, and it was a great evening. On Thursday the 2nd, I attended the United Way. Wrap-up, and just want to congratulate Don Natchek and the team at GPRC for leading the charge this year with the United Way. Obviously, the results speak to the job that they did. They did an excellent job. I left lunch pretty early and headed over to Centre 2000 that same day for the Chamber of Commerce swearing-in. It was my pleasure to swear in new president, Dave Cook, and congratulations to Dave and his entire board. On Friday the 3rd, I was also at the Volunteer Services Bureau Breakfast, and later that evening, attended at the Aqua Terra Christmas Party. On Monday, the 6th, I was here, as has been mentioned, for the raising of the Canada Games flag at City Hall in recognition of the 44th anniversary of the Canada Games, and I guess a little over 15 years since Grand Prairie's Games. It was my pleasure to be able to do that. On Tuesday, the 7th, I attended at the Meals on Wheels Volunteer Lunch, and I feel like I took my life in my hands when I was in the room and in my comments, made a little bit of an observation that a number of the volunteers, the majority, the vast majority of the volunteers that were there were of an age where it would be safe to say that they're seniors themselves, and may soon need to have people bringing dinner to them. And I took my life in my hands, because I think it's very important that the public knows that this is a very valued service, and that there's need for volunteers to step into the shoes of these seniors who won't necessarily always be able to continue on. So if people are interested, especially through the winter months where folks have a difficult time getting out of their houses, I'd encourage them to look up Meals on Wheels and maybe even spend a week and take a little time slot to do some service there. On Wednesday the 8th, I attended an Aqua Terra board meeting, and then that evening was at the wine and cheese for the members of the '95 Canada Winter Games Host Society. My thanks to the staff in my office and a number of other city staff who made those arrangements. As we heard already from other council members, I think everybody that was there and attendance enjoyed being able to reminisce. And the '95 Winter Games were certainly a high point, I think, in the history of Grand Prairie over the last number of years. And it certainly was an opportunity for us to step onto a national stage, and I think a chance to remember all those who put in the effort to make that happen was certainly worthwhile. We appreciated being able to do that. On Thursday the 9th, I was also at the pie luncheon in support of the Prairie Gallery. I attended at the MS Society Open House and at the chamber mixer later that evening. On Saturday, the 11th, I had an opportunity to have a coffee with the CEO of Stars. Dr. Powell was in town for their Stars Christmas Party later that evening. I had an opportunity to talk to them about issues of mutual concern. Also raised the fact that they probably need to be speaking with GPRC and Provincial Department of Infrastructure to ensure that the new health center is fully equipped and ready, and they took that as a good, a good idea, and obviously they'll be continuing to do that. On today, Monday, the 13th, I was with the city manager. We called him Santa Manager, because he was in a suit. He had a tie. He had a beard. He looked a little tattered and worn, I'd say. But it was our pleasure to go around to different city facilities and make Christmas deliveries of goodies to all the good little girls and boys who work so hard to serve our community throughout the course of the year. It was a pleasure to be able to do that, and we hit a number of facilities today. We'll hit some more tomorrow. At one of the facilities, we had the opportunity to be there at the same time to celebrate the 10th anniversary of employment for Lynn Pack, who's been with the city of Grand Prairie for 10 years now. And it was our pleasure to be at the Community Social Development Building to help her celebrate that milestone, and we appreciate Lynn's service over those years. And that's all I have to report. If there's nothing else for the council meeting, we call our meeting adjourned. Thank you.